We can close it back. But it's showing now.
Oh, man, yeah. Be sure of that. I'm glad you're optimistic about this. So all I thought to say. He's already pronounced. All right. Can you hear me out there? Okay. Thank you for being here tonight. This is the City of Garden City Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. It is Wednesday, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. And it is six thirty-two. Confirming audio and video is working correctly?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now call the meeting to order. For the record, we have Commissioner Smith, Wild, Brown, and Shepherd all present, and now we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, this commission provides for a public hearing for quasi judicial administrative land use decisions, appeals, and legislative actions specific to land use regulations. This commission makes final decisions on conditional use permits, variances, and appeals, and makes recommendations to the city council for subdivisions, rezones, and annexations, as well as code or comprehensive plan amendments. The format for the public hearing will follow a procedure for each application that includes presentation by the applicant, presentation of the city staff report, public testimony, rebuttal testimony from the applicant, discussion of the hearing among the commissioners, and then the decision. If you wish to give public testimony, there are some general rules to abide by. No person shall be permitted to speak at the public hearing until the person is recognized by the chair to do so. The commission will not address those who speak out of order. If you have questions, you may ask them during your turn for public testimony, and the applicant can respond to those questions during the rebuttal, or the commission can ask the question of staff during their discussion. If you're here to speak, please sign up. There are signup sheets over at the door. No person shall be permitted to testify at the public hearing unless recognized to do so. And if such person is in person, then please fill in the form so that we know that you're going to speak, as well as provide your full name and written residential address on the signup sheet. When you approach the podium, please state your name and address into the microphone. This time, are there any changes to the agenda?
Chairman, there are none by staff.
All right, thank you. So we'll move into the consent agenda, item four. The consent agenda includes items of business which may not require separate discussion. From time to time, we move an item to the consent agenda. At this time, I do not see any items to move to the consent agenda. With that, we have item A, which is the approval of the minutes from the July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. Is there any other items for discussion amongst the commissioners?
No.
Thank you. Hearing none. We'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Wild. Thank you, Commissioner Wild.
I made a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wild.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any further deliberation? Hearing none, we'll take it to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And he knows the ayes have it. All right, now we'll move on to item five, old business. This is public hearing action item. So again, the format for the public hearing will follow the process of a brief introduction, presentation by the applicant, a presentation by the city staff, the public hearing, rebuttal testimony, we'll close the public hearing, have a discussion amongst the commissioners, and then have a decision. With that, we'll move to item A, SUBFY two zero two four dash zero 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 six. Edgemere subdivision to combine preliminary plat- final plat processed as a planned unit development. Jaden Schneider is requesting a nine residential lot subdivision with one common lot. The property is currently located at two one nine East Forty-Fourth Streets in the R three zoning district. So with that, we will turn it over to the applicant. And again, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Jaden Schneider, three seven seven zero North Jackie Lane Boise. I'm the applicant working with Bronze Bow. I, on behalf of the developer here tonight. So this is Edgemere subdivision. It's a preliminary plat and PUD. And I'll just jump right into it. The site is on Forty-Fourth Street, just right next to Adams Street. It's just about half an acre in total. The R three medium density is the zone. It's a proposal for nine attached townhome units and one common lot for a total of ten units. The nine units are split up into two building blocks, one with five attached product and one with four. And the common lot is basically exclusively the actual private driveway portion of this project. I'll come back to this slide, but I'll switch forward just to kind of give a quick show of what the site looks like right now. The existing use is residential. There's two mobile or manufactured homes on the site. Around the property is similar in nature, the manufactured home, single-family dwelling unit, detached single-family dwelling units in this area. The site itself has a long, narrow driveway portion, which I'll call the stem portion of the of the lot. And this driveway portion is shared not only with the two manufactured homes that are on the property right now, but to other properties adjacent to it along the, it's to the right-hand side of the screen. It's kind of southeast portion of the site. So I wanted to mention the existing driveway, just because I'm talking about what we're trying to propose right now. It's basically an upgrade to the existing access point to the site, and then build off of that access point. Hannah mentioned it in the staff report. There's a little bit of a constraint with the width of the driveway, especially at the existing stem portion of the driveway here at the entrance to the site. That width right now is twenty-five feet wide. So in order to build a compliant driveway, I believe that in order, the private driveway minimum width is twenty-six feet for the site. We're already constrained on that portion right there. So what the developer is proposing to do is build a twenty-foot-wide driveway, which would meet fire code, provide a four-foot-wide connection or on that twenty feet, provide a four-foot asphalt or concrete portion for basically pedestrian access point to try to direct pedestrian access through there. And then, as soon as it gets past the choke point, bell out into a larger twenty-six-foot-wide section for this road. So it's kind of a bit of an interesting constraint for this site, but the developer's trying to work around it, or is hopefully proposing something that makes sense for this site. On top of that, a few other site, I guess nuances that I wanted to touch on. Again, going back to that access point and going back to the concrete pathway. The idea behind this is to draw pedestrian access off the middle of the road onto some area the side or to the side of it, and then to bring pedestrian access around the site. So what you'll see here for these buildings is the driveway portion connecting directly to the private drive. So each of these individual units would have a driveway connecting to the private drive, and then a concrete pathway that wraps around the site to try to add pedestrian access. This was something that we went back and forth at design review, trying to provide something that made sense with it. One of the comments at design review was, hey, can we draw the eye and draw the pedestrian to use this access point as much as possible? So what that included, and what we've updated the site to include, is a trellis and some upgraded landscaping in this area to try to pull people's eye and pull people, hey, we don't want you walking down the private driveway the entire length. We want to pull you into this area if you're walking on the site, which would lead to the front doors of each one of these units. So I'll kind of skip ahead just to show what this would look like here. The front of the units would be on the opposite side of the private driveway. And so what you'll see with the southwest elevation here at the top is this is what the proposal for the front of the units with this access point and this, the doorways here. And then the northeast elevation being the elevations that you would see from the private drive. Just kind of speaking about the units themselves, generally they're two-bed, two-and-a-half-bath with a two-car garage. The total living space for them varies. Some of them on the B one and B two blocks are about fourteen hundred square feet in total. And then, when you get to the five-plex, there's a number that are larger. The type A unit is twenty-two thousand one hundred sixty-two feet, square feet for livable space. So they try to vary in size, which is something that code asks for, something to try to provide some variance or variation to the actual buildings themselves. I don't have the elevations of the side, but that was something that design review had spoken to specifically, saying, hey, can you add more fenestration to these buildings? Can you just add a little bit more character to allow people to, when you're walking beside the building, it looks nice and things like that? And so basically, what the builder and the developer are trying to do here is come up with a product that looks nice overall and have something that makes a lot of sense for it. So we just have some ideas of what these would look like or what we think they'd look like. Stone there, we have the stucco siding and just some variation between the trim and the fascia, just to add a little bit of that exact variation. So it's not just one contiguous block and one big slab of building right there. One of the comments that we had talked about was open space. Now, in the staff report, Hannah mentions it. This is what we're trying to highlight as what we think is the qualified open space. I know Hannah can talk to it more. The total site area again is just about half an acre. The total open space that we've shown here is about one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight square feet. However, in addition to that, there's this this area which would be dedicated with easement for cross-access easement for, again, pedestrian access, which would be a larger space and would provide usable, walkable area. So trying to meet the intent of the code, however, due to the fact that it's a setback, it doesn't fall into the qualified open space. So generally, just the developer and the builder trying to work to make something that they think works and make a good product in this area. However, again, going back to the constraints of the existing site being so tight, it's difficult to fit all of the things into one box here. And then, just lastly, here's what the landscape plan is looking like. I just wanted to bring this one up because the developer's proposing to add a large number of landscape items throughout the site where possible. Again, going back to the constraint of the twenty-five-foot stem portion of the driveway, it gets difficult because what you're trying to put in there is about two feet of space on either side of the driveway. So the landscape architect is trying to come up with some sort of skyrocket juniper-type tree, something to provide vertical element to the landscaping without having it come over top, blocking pedestrian access, blocking an already narrow road. And then, just going further into the site, the same type of idea. One thing with talking about is the hammerhead area. There's an increase in landscaping in this area. Proposed bench, proposed bicycle parking, to just to provide some area for people to be able to congregate in that small site. So despite it being a small site, the developer and builder are still trying to make something that makes sense. There's not a whole lot else that I was going to touch on at this moment. I know Hannah will talk about it more, but with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant?
Not at this time.
Mr. Shepherd.
I heard you say that there were two other properties that access through the stem transportation. Can you guys? How are they gonna just have a different access? It didn't look like. Maybe you could point to me, because I was looking at the ones down on the.
Sure, it's it's this unit right here, if you can see that mouse. This unit right here and this unit right here.
Okay, sorry.
And yeah, no problem. And this would be the two access points. So the cross-access easement that's in, that's already there for the property would remain. And in fact, this driveway being upgraded would just be their main access point now. So it would be the brand-new homes here, as well as the two existing homes that currently take access.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have one more question, too. I just need to pull up the staff report really quick. Sorry, let me try that. Can you guys hear me better now? Thank you for letting me. I appreciate. Okay, just give me a second, please, because. Okay, so the common drive, it looked like the common drive needed to be twenty-six feet for fire to access it, but you said twenty feet, they could access it, and then it opens up a little bit. So I just wanted to make sure I understood that the fire can access twenty-foot.
So my understanding of fire code is the minimum access point that they would need in order to drive a fire truck would be twenty feet wide. However, if you want to build a structure, I believe that the height is thirty-six feet. It might be shorter than that. But if you want to build a structure over X number of feet, it needs to be wider. My understanding of that is when they have the larger ladder trucks, the trucks provide those supports that fan out beside the truck so that they don't tip over when the ladder's all the way up. And that's where the twenty-six-foot requirement would come in. So what the what's happening in this situation is the access point is twenty feet so that the truck can get down. But when it actually gets to the point where a ladder truck would be required, it would be twenty-six feet. So in front of the buildings, it would be twenty-six feet to meet that fire code. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other? Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. Touching on the common driveway as well, I I saw in the staff report that there's a recommendation that it may be easier to characterize this as a common driveway as opposed to a private street, with the only change being that we would have to approve that it would serve the nine dwelling units instead of the four under code, which we can do through a PUD process. So is there any reason why you wouldn't want that designated as a common driveway? May make your life easier.
If, yeah, if if that's available to us, we'd absolutely take that option. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No, those were the. Star's question was the one that I was gonna ask, so thank you.
I do have a question for you regarding the where the the private drive bells, and it looks like that is expanded from the edge of the landscaped area to the area where the driveway is?
Yes.
Is that, I'm having a hard time seeing it. Is that, how how wide is that? That's twenty? Let's see if I can help this here.
So basically, at this point, right here where the mouse is, that's twenty-five feet, and the roadway portion, the the transversible portion of that road would be twenty-foot. And then, once it gets to the edge of the building portion, that's where it meets twenty-six feet, right at that corner right there. So that's where it extends to the twenty-six-foot section. Does that answer your question?
It does. And where this is going, and we'll probably get to it a little bit later, but are there any concerns just with how wide the parking? I know that parking's another issue, and you're looking for a waiver in regards to the length of the guest parking. It looks like the length of that parking is. Is it fifteen feet?
I I believe fifteen feet, yes.
And so just doing some research on vehicles and some vehicles being larger than others, obviously. But is there any concern? So for example, looking up an F one fifty, for example, you're between seventeen to twenty feet. F three fifty or twenty-two feet, and then a RAV four, for example, is fifteen feet. Do you have any concerns that you're gonna have vehicles that are gonna be sticking out into the drive?
I I think that that's totally valid. I think where the builder is trying to meet the code is by allowing for that two-car garage inside of the building. And I understand the argument usually comes back to, well, people fill their garages with stuff and then park in their driveway. I think that this is where the builder is trying to say, hey, you know, we've extended the actual interior portion. So basically, almost the entire floor space in interior to the building meets, it does meet that two-car garage minimum there. So what's happening in that point is, hey, we're trying to provide a full two-car garage, at least depth-wise. It's a tandem garage, so back to or front to back in that portion. And then adding the driveways as a guest parking situation. So yes, I understand where that's coming from. The idea behind it being, hey, it's a guest parking. We don't expect it to be used full-time. If it is a someone coming by with their F three fifty and it's a large car, in the CCNRs, it will be posted, hey, you can't, or in the fire lane, it's a no-parking fire lane along the actual drivable, transversible portion. So it's the idea being, hey, just like somebody coming and parking in a regular residential street, they're overhanging into the street, technically not allowed. So I think the intent of it is trying to provide that access in that drive or parking spaces interior to the garage where people would want to park, and then have it as residential guest parking.
Thank you. And then, understanding site utilization and maximizing the site, was there any discussion of removing one unit, for example, just to try and get to some of these standards that seem like you potentially could have if you had a reduced density?
We we've looked into it a little bit and trying to do it. It it does come down a bit to a dollars and cents thing to try to make the site feasible and and make it work. You know, ideally with the site, this we think would work. However, you know, I understand that, hey, dropping out a building would alleviate a lot of concerns with it. So I think that that's something that I can chat with the developer a little bit more, you know, candidly about, hey, you know, are you open to that idea? It's hard for me, just as the applicant, to at least, you know, say, hey, we're willing to give up two buildings or a building or something in that side. So as best I can, that's my answer. Sorry, sorry that it's not a little bit more definitive for you.
No, it's good. You answered my question. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brown.
I apologize. I did say that I wasn't doing anything at this time, but your question and the answer prompted that question. I was going to save for the rebuttal, but if I understand that your answer is that the guest parking, which would be essentially is their driveway, that will only be suitable if the guests have a compact car. Is that correct?
You you've nailed it. Absolutely.
My understanding is that also applies, though, to the garages. The two ten, these garages are gonna be tandem garages. That's one car in front of the other. My understanding, and I'm sure that Hannah is gonna address this, was that that is also only sufficient for compact cars. Is that correct?
I, you you know, I actually, I believe that I've looked into it once before, and I think that I have the answer for you, however, it's on my phone. So if you'll allow me, I think I would be able to give you at least my interpretation of the answer, maybe perhaps after the public hearing portion. I think I can give you that answer.
That would be fine. I I think that we probably there'll be more than myself be interested in it, and I will be very interested in how, what Hannah has to say about that.
Understood.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it. Phil.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm just gonna use these wonderful illustrations that the applicant has provided. I did not have the chance to create my own presentation, so these work just as well as me trying to describe the the project. And this application is subdivision fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash zero 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 six. It's for Edgemere. It is a preliminary and final plat subdivision that is to be processed as a planned unit development. The application involves one parcel on a little over a half an acre. That's going to be subdivided into one common lot and nine townhomes. The proposed development achieves the density of seventeen dwelling units per acre, which does align with the R three medium-density residential zoning district, as well as the mixed-use commercial and the neighborhood destination activity node of the comprehensive plan. The R three zoning district has a maximum density of thirty-five dwelling units per acre. In the comprehensive plans, future land use designation for that activity node is fourteen dwelling units per acre. So keeping the minimum and maximum densities, those buffers in mind, the seventeen dwelling units per acre as proposed is compliant with both the comprehensive plan and the zoning district. However, the increased density or compliant density has resulted in a shortfall of some code compliance, such as open space landscaping and the parking concerns. And I I can just dive into the the code issues. So I had a little outline of the the issues, and I can dive further into the staff report. But the the first item being the parking design and dimensions. So overall, the project proposes tandem parking garages. So it is that one car in front of another with the guest parking being within the driveways behind that. So essentially, you'll see it as three cars all in a line on that one property. And the tandem parking garages are slightly undersized. So code requires that a parking space is ten by twenty for a ninety-degree parking space, whereas these are, I don't have it memorized, but it's about thirty-eight by ten feet total. So each parking size is about a foot short, totally two feet short for the two parking spaces. The guest parking is also undersized. I have it noted as fifteen by twelve per their site plans. And while that doesn't meet a a normal parking dimension, it does exceed the compact parking size. So it's bigger than the compact parking size that code allows, but it's smaller than what the normal parking size allows. And there has been a waiver request or a code adjustment request for both the guest parking and the tandem parking, which has been highlighted in the staff report, as well as mentioned in the recommendation decision document. Next, the private street and common drive conversation. So the, in the applications documents, we have a private driveway that is twenty feet wide, which does include a four-foot-wide pedestrian pathway along the, I'll call it the southern side of the property. This does not meet the minimum twenty-six-foot-wide private drive requirement that our code states. And so the applicant has requested that code adjustment allowing for the reduction in the private private street. I'll call it private street, not private drive, because that's how code identifies it. So a private street needs to be twenty-six foot wide. They, as of tonight, have included that portions of it are twenty-six feet wide. So that is code compliant, but it narrows down to that that twenty-foot-wide private street, which would not be code compliant. And the issue there is that private streets need to be twenty-six foot wide, not only for fire code, but also for Ada County Highway District with standards. And so if this private street were to ever be given to ACHD, ACHD would need it to be at least twenty-six feet wide in order to adopt it. And however, with that being said, and as mentioned in my staff report, it can be considered a common drive. But another waiver or a different waiver would need to be included in that. And so in the decision document and staff report, I have a code adjustment where it's either option A or option B, and it's for picking the private street width reduction as that waiver, or picking the more than four units accessed off of a common drive. Picking the more than four units accessed off of a common drive. It's kind of an I either or depending on how we want to determine what this driveway is or what this this street is. There really is not much of a difference that code gives us, other than it's what its intent is. Um, so if it needs to be a private street, then it needs to be twenty six feet wide. And A C H D could maybe potentially, but not likely, adopt it one day. Um. Or it could be a common drive more more for these residents to access and not be like a thorough street. So then moving on to the sidewalk conversation, um. This property does not have a very large frontage onto the street, um, onto East forty fourth street. As you could tell on the screen, um, it's kind of like a bottleneck area, and it's really only wide enough for the. The driveway to have access. Um, A C H D has put a maximum limitation on this access at twenty four feet wide. Um, which also conflicts with the twenty six foot wide requirement of a street. So. That hasn't been resolved. A C H D has not provided any further comments. Um, it could be hashed out later during the. Construction process of of the subdivision. Um, but with that being said. There isn't really any room for a sidewalk on East forty fourth street. Um. There are are conditions that I have drafted that make it so that a future connection or a future sidewalk on adjacent. Properties can easily tie into um where this drive aisle is intersecting with. East forty fourth street, but you know, matter matters of what how wide this actually is is um. There's just no room for a sidewalk. And then going on to the landscaping, um. The applicant has not provided sufficient information to confirm whether or not the five percent of the site is covered in landscaping. Um, or the requirement of five percent of the gross site area is covered with landscaping. Um, the submitted open space calculations do include a setback in perimeter landscaping areas. But those areas do not qualify as the required landscaping. So when looking at the. Landscaping requirements, it specifically says landscaping in setbacks and perimeter landscaping. Cannot count towards that landscaping requirement. So everything internal to those setbacks. Would be the only stuff that matters. Um, so we're looking at the essentially just the common open space area. That has landscaping in it, and I'm not sure if that. Meets the five percent requirement or not. Um, there is a condition drafted to confirm whether or not that does meet the five percent. The issue with the condition, though, is that if it does not meet the five percent as proposed, then they're going to need to squeeze in. However, many square feet of landscaping later to meet that five percent. And I don't know how much of the site will actually need to change to accommodate that that five percent. There, there is another requirement for a street tree, um, just based off of the fact that code. States that one street tree is required per frontage. And this development has a frontage on East forty fourth street. The issue is that there's not enough room for a street tree. There's definitely not enough room for a sidewalk, which is where we normally put our street trees. And so in in the discussion and what will need to be deliberated tonight is where can we put that required street tree? Or can it be another code request or a code waiver? Um, in the landscape plan, you can kind of see that there's some shrubs. Provided along the the perimeters of that driveway. Um, but that's only about two-ish feet wide, which would probably not be sufficient enough. For a tree to survive and be healthy. Um, and then also piggybacking on the perimeter landscaping conversation, um. There, like I said, there is a two foot wide landscape buffer proposed along that common driveway. Um, but a minimum of ten feet is required, so they're deficient about eight feet of perimeter landscaping. However, in the past, we have allowed for a reduction in that ten foot um buffer. And we've allowed for a five foot buffer, anticipating that the adjacent properties also have landscaping. That can contribute to that perimeter landscaping with, or an adjacent property has a potential for redevelopment at a later date. Um, but in the meantime, there has been a. A code adjustment or waiver request for that perimeter landscaping deficiency. And then getting into the open space. Conversation, um. So although the proposed open space does exceed ten percent based off of the um open space exhibit that they provided. So the green on this um slide shows what the open space is. Or what is being counted as open space. And so that technically meets the ten percent square footage wise. Um, however, it doesn't meet any of the standard dimensional requirements. Um, and I I can get into that more. There's a lot of different ways that open space can qualify. Um, typically, we see it as a twenty by twenty square. Um, or four hundred square feet, which is one of the ways they can qualify. Um, otherwise, there's. A forty by ten option for open space. Um. And while they're providing a ten by two hundred. Um, and ten by seventy one. Open space, uh, it's primarily like a pedestrian pathway, and there's not a lot, if any landscaping involved. They're planted in that area. Um, and when looking at the common open space purpose. Statements and what common open space is supposed to achieve. Um, it's not really meeting what is required of common open space. So it's like connections to other. Um, developments or having it be landscaped for either an active or passive recreational function. Um, there's quite a few, and I can pull those up in code too, if if we need to. I don't have all of them memorized, but. Um, I I'm just concerned with the location and what is being proposed within the common open space as identified. Um, while even though it exceeds the percentage, it doesn't really meet the dimensional standards or what common open space is supposed to be. And then there's the waterway enclosure. So there is a Fairview Acres lateral ditch or canal. Along the, I'll call it this, the the southern property boundary line. Um. Basically, right where that pedestrian pathway is running down the the fronts of the townhomes. Um. In our code and in the comprehensive plan, it speaks to keeping these. Waterways open and not tiling them and using them as an amenity. Um, in. This property, portions of the lateral are already tiled, portions of it are currently open. Um, the proposal is to tile all of it, and part of the reason why is because they are bringing in fill to meet the floodplain. Regulations, and so the development will. Actually end up being taller by like two or three feet is what I I believe is what it will be. Um. Taller than where the irrigation ditch is currently. Um, and there's just not really a way for the. Waterway to be incorporated into the development without rerouting it somewhere and it being opened up elsewhere. Um, and it just doesn't work within this proposed site plan. And there are ways that the commission and the design review consultants can um essentially waive. The requirement to keep it open, and the consultants found that if they met those requirements. Um, the the ditch is tiled on adjacent properties, and so that is one of the ways that. Um, the proposal of tiling it can can be code compliant. So I guess in in like a closing statement, um, this is a planned unit development, so. The applicant can ask for essentially as many code waivers as they need or as they want. Um, but it is up to the commission and ultimately city council, um, cuz you guys are a recommend recommending body. Um, how many waivers of those are actually granted and if they are justified? So the P U D mechanism um is not intended to be solely to like deviate from. Code requirements, um, but it is to allow for innovative um. Innovative design and just better development through the deviations of code, but it's more of a like give and take scenario. So there's findings and purpose statements of the planned unit development that need to be met in order for an application to be. Um, granted those waivers. And, um. And so for, I'll say, for example, um, like promoting a diversity of housing is objective one of the P U D. And this subdivision does provide a diversity of housing, um, even though it technically does not need to provide. That because it's under the ten dwelling units. Um, objective two is enhancing open space and recreational um opportunities, and. I'm not entirely sure how this application provides that, um, but it is providing pedestrian connectivity. Um, and that is also why I have drafted um a, like a cross access easement. In the conditions to require that this driveway connect to an adjacent parcel to um the east. Which will allow for a future connection to um forty third street if the adjacent parcel. Redevelops. And this is in alignment with the Old Town Transportation Network Plan that we have adopted. And this exact location is, has been identified as a micro street. In that transportation plan. Um, so it essentially just goes down straight through this. Um, where this existing drive aisle is and across these other properties over to forty third street. So the plan calls for a connection, and um with that condition being drafted and. Potentially approved to allow for that future connection, I think we could be meeting the planned unit development. Objective number two that asks for, um. The like transportation systems and the circulation in connection to um other properties. Um, to be compliant with that. All right. So as a as staff, I'm supposed to give you a recommendation of an approval or in denial. Um, and. As a planned unit development, it is difficult for me to give you a straight up recommendation. Um, because of all of these waivers, so. In essence, I am recommending a denial based off of all the code compliance issues. However, with the code adjustments and if they are granted. Um, then I can recommend approval of the application. Uh, but there will need to be deliberations on how the application meets those P U D findings and objectives. And I have drafted ways in which um you can either agree or disagree with my findings. My drafted findings and the recommendation decision. Um, but. With that, I'll stand for question.
Thank you, Ms. Veal. I appreciate it. Very thorough report and all the work that went into it. So thank you very much. Questions for staff?
Mister Chair, I have a question. Um.
Mister Smith.
So regarding the driveway, if we were to characterize this as a common driveway as opposed to a private street. How would that affect that future plan you discussed with the easement and creating a through street? Would that prevent that from occurring or would it not matter either way?
Um, commissioners, it would not necessarily matter. I mean, eventually it would. Impact how that adjacent development does redevelop. But the fact that it's either a common driver or private street doesn't really matter cuz it can operate in the same manner.
Regardless of the width requirement difference between the two, still go all the way through and connect.
Yes. Yeah, and without knowing when or if that adjacent property is going to redevelop, um. Or how, I guess I'll say, it, they might be required to provide a twenty six foot wide street. Based off of what they're proposing, or it could turn into a smaller common drive as just a thorough fair like an alley.
Sure. Thank you.
Ms. Veal, following up on that. Would there be any issues with A C H D coming back? So if it's classified as a common drive. At this point, would then it be precluded from being a private street in the future and being named?
Um, Mister Chairman, so I believe this will already qualify for a name, um, because it is a subdivision. I I just don't think that A C H D will formally adopt it as a street that they own and maintain. And take on themselves. So with it being a private street or a common drive, it will be up to the H O A. And I would assume adjacent property owners to maintain it, whether it's a private street or a common drive.
Thank you. And then a follow up question. Is there any concern with the neighboring property owners who are also accessing that street?
Um, there has not been any uh comments made to me that I am aware of about any concerns.
And so that one changed the analysis that since there's neighboring property owners who are also accessing. The forty fourth street, that it wouldn't change the classification?
No, um, it it is that the staff report. Did not have all of the common drive versus private street um versus. Or end, not versus, and Old Town Circulation Network Connection. Um, through street. It did not have all that in the design review staff report, but that wasn't released to the public. Um, and the adjacent property owners have had access to the staff report. Um, the whole, the whole time since it's been available to to you guys. Um, they just. They weren't notified on the initial noticing cuz it wasn't what was proposed.
Okay, thank you, Mister Chairman. Commissioner Brown?
Uh, I want to pursue a somewhat, first of all, that question addressing what. Commissioner Smith and the chairman addressed with regard to this. Future connection to the forty fourth in involving a plan we put together a long time ago on. Typology of streets in Garden City. If that connection, because a future developer was put in place. That would not have to be a public street. Is that correct? It could continue to be some kind of a private arrangement.
Um, commissioners, yes, it could be a private arrangement, but the intent of the Old Town Circulation Network Plan is to. Provide that public access along these really long blocks north of Chindon where we don't have a lot of. Through connections there. So it's trying to create more of a grid-like pattern um within the city.
So the intent was, am I correct in saying the intent was that those would be public streets?
Correct.
Maybe of reduced size, but be public streets. Is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, let's go back to this question of parking space. What we essentially are saying, the current way it's designed. Then both the owners and the visitors would be limited to compact cars. Is that correct?
Hmm, commissioners, yes, um. In a way, I can't.
Fit in the parking space.
That they were, they're smaller parking spaces than what code anticipated a standard vehicle would be, but it doesn't. They're not technically the size of what a compact car would. A a compact car would fit in it, um, and there'd be a lot of extra room. A compact car would fit in it and there would be a lot of extra room, but it's not as small as what a compact car would be considered.
Thank you.
Mr. Shepherd?
And I have a question. It's, it's regarding, well, I'm seeing that Republic Services says discussions with the applicant resulted in them approving the option whereby residents could leave their carts in their own driveway. And I think my question is if you know trash and recycling and if they do composting, that could be three trucks a day. And I'm just thinking like, if there's like other, like are the cars of, if there's a trash truck in that at in the driveway, are cars just going to have to wait out on 44th street? Like, has that been contemplated in terms of safety? Like the trash truck's not going to be able to like back up for them or they might have to wait until the trash truck's done with the whole street to leave their home. I mean, if that's okay with the residents, I guess maybe it's not.
Yeah. Commissioner Shepherd, it hasn't really been hashed out to that extent. It is not uncommon to see a 20 foot wide drive aisle with, with trash access. There's a lot of other subdivisions that have more of that alleyway garage approach where that's where the trash service is. But yes, I mean, it could cause congestion or people to wait. It is preferred that the trash gets picked up on site though, especially in this scenario because it, as to your point, you know, potentially three trash bins for compost recycling and trash, like all out on 44th for nine units, just doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't operate as, as well. There's a lot of trash bins out there at that point when they only have such limited front page.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Wild?
I, I just have one question. It's about open space. This is not the slide, but you had a slide up there that the open space was identified in green. Yeah. So that slide suggests they meet the open space requirement of 10%? Yes, you said that?
Yes.
But it also includes a portion of that pedestrian path, which by virtue of code can't be included in open space designation.
It, it can.
It can.
It can. Where I was going with that comment was more the, the purpose of what common open space is supposed to be. So in including that pedestrian pathway and not having a lot of landscaping along that pedestrian pathway area, it's not really meeting the intent of common open space.
Sure. Okay. I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have one more follow up.
Commissioner Smith?
Ms. Veal, I want to follow up on what Commissioner Wild asked about the, the open space because it, it gave me a thought. So my biggest concern with this whole project, and I was going to ask the applicant again, but I might as well start now, is the parking because if your average car is about 16 feet ish long, that's your standard SUV, your standard sedan. And this parking, these parking spots are in the driveway for the guest spots are 15. And then you have limited space inside. People are going to park full size vehicles in the driveway, whether it's the guests or it's the residents, and they're going to be sticking out into that road by a foot or however long unless they park at some kind of angle, which no one will. And that's going to block other people's access. It's going to block fire access. So I have a lot of concerns about the parking from a safety and just practical perspective. But what if, and maybe this is a hard no, but what if we were to eliminate the requirement of that weird little open space completely? So that then these properties could widen and they could fix the parking problems. I mean, I, I know we'd be exchanging one value for another, but is, is that an option to just say you don't need to plant those funny little open spaces, but we are going to require full size parking spaces?
Yeah. So commissioners, that is an option. However, we still need the hammerhead.
Gotcha.
So I don't know how much room we're actually gaining in doing so.
Got you. Because they still need to be able to turn around.
Correct.
Any other questions for Ms. Veal?
I do have another question.
Commissioner Shepherd?
On a similar note to Commissioner Smith, but not so much regarding the open space, but just making adjustments since, since open space is an issue. Can we have them like the tree, for example, put it in another place in the city like a park? Or make parking where that open spaces? And then they can make, I don't know, like we're talking about pocket parks and things like that. Like just do something else that helps the city, not in that development, but just somewhere else. Is that something we could?
Commissioners, I, I, we don't have a method of doing so. We have like a tree mitigation fund. That's more for the removal of healthy trees and their caliper inches. And they, if the applicant can't plant those on site, then they pay into this tree mitigation fund. And that those funds then can be used elsewhere. And I, we have never approved something in, in that essence where if they can't meet code, then we're just going to donate that tree to a different development or application or a park or something within the city.
Okay. I was just thinking, not thinking.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brown?
This line of questioning, I apologize, has prompted another question, a follow up on that. Am I not correct? This has to do with the previous commissioner's question about our commissioner Smith of turning that area into an area where you could have parking. Isn't that hammerhead a requirement of the fire department that that be there so that fire trucks can turn around?
Yes, Commissioner Brown, yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Fire and trash.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Veal?
I guess to clarify, I was thinking when I mentioned having parking and that it's not taking away the hammerhead as much as it is. I mean, are those like bushes or trees, something down there where that open space where you have the green? Like, I don't know if that would even fit a car, but to put parking there.
Yeah. I mean, it's not showing that width dimension exactly.
Any other questions for Ms. Veal? Thank you, Ms. Veal.
Do want to clarify. So we, in relation to the like donation of tree conversation or like utilizing some kind of agreement for a tree that cannot be planted on the proposed development. We have had a situation where there was a development who then donated their required trees to an adjacent parcel. So it was benefiting both of them in that same exact location, just on the adjacent property. So that, that might be an option. Obviously it would need to be explored with that adjacent property.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Very much, Ms. Veal. All right, staff, is there anyone, is there anybody signed up to testify on this matter?
And chairman, we did not see any signups.
Okay. Just to make sure, is there anybody in the audience that's here to testify on this matter? All right. Seeing none, then we'll go ahead and turn it back over to the applicant.
Thank you again. Do you need name and address again?
Sure.
Jaden Schneider, 3770 North Jackie Lane Boise. As Hannah mentioned, to quote her directly, this site is really easy, makes a lot of sense and it's a super slam dunk. It's the, Hannah put in a lot of work on this project, so I meant to thank her earlier, but it's, it's definitely, you know, doesn't go unnoticed that she's really helped us and worked with us on it. So I'm trying to help clarify where I can, but Hannah did a really good job of, of helping us out, at least trying to show what we're doing. The first one, Commissioner Brown, to answer your question for it, the total depth of the individual parking stalls interior is 38 feet deep. The, with the justification, when we went back to it to look it up, back in February of this year, the justification was the best selling truck in America is the Ford F-150 and the length of a F-150 XLT is about 244 inches, which is just about 20 feet. The best selling SUV in America is the Toyota RAV4, which is about 181 inches long, which is about 15 feet. So a RAV4 plus to Ford F-150 is 35.5 feet. So if the depth is 38, the two best selling vehicles in America, those would fit. And then the best selling SUV in America, or the second best is the Ford Explorer, a longer vehicle, which is about 199 inches, which is 16.58 feet. So the Ford F-150 and the Ford Explorer, 37 feet. So it would still meet the depth requirement of those two interior parking stalls. Now, I understand, speaking of that, the F-150 being over 15 feet, going back to the guest parking there. I did want to mention, just kind of Hannah had talked about it there and we had, we had discussed maybe as an opportunity. If planning zoning, city council, whomever was open to some sort of situation where parking was added somewhere else, there is enough space in the hammerhead area, not on the emergency turnaround area, but in addition to the emergency turnaround area where the open space is that could be utilized for guest parking. So in the current configuration right now, it would be possible to add three additional parking stalls fairly easily, two at the end of the hammerhead and then one additional beside the hammerhead, mostly like a parallel parking type situation. However, you're going back to the situation of you're, you're giving up open space in order to get parking. And is that something that commission likes or is that something that they hate? I completely understand, hey, you know, no one, no one wants to trade a park for pavement. But anyways, that, that is one thing that, that just touched on right there. That would be a possibility. Just speaking with the developer there, well, we were seated and Hannah was speaking. They would be open if there was some sort of agreement in place to them. Hey, you know, if we can't plant these trees here because we are paving this, we'd be open to planting trees in a city park or in somewhere that would make sense there. Again, I understand that it is asking a lot to say, can we give up what minimal open space we have for parking space, but if it solves the issue of safety and provides some sort of agreement in lieu of this location for another location, that is something that they would absolutely be interested in or, you know, open to the idea of trying to make work just as they want to try to make this work. Alternative compliance, I guess, is what I'm trying to say there. The other one being just the tiled ditch, as Hannah mentioned, the, the, the goal would be to have it as an open waterway if possible. Hannah touched on it really well, but it's just it due to this constraint of the site, having a 26 foot wide driveway portion, having the fire code calls for a minimum 15 foot setback from the 26 foot driveway for, again, going back to the ladder truck analogy. It, it needs to be 15 feet. So these driveways need to be 15 feet wide. And then going back again to city codes tandem parking garage, having these depths, at least we're proposing 38 feet. It basically just doesn't allow for any area for, it's the irrigation canal right here that we're proposing tiling that we're putting in. So it, the goal from the builder is to try to meet as much as they can with the tight site and come up with something that works really well. I, you know, I appreciate Hannah and all that she's done to try to work with us to come up with a site that works for, we, we think works well. But it, it, it really is a difficult site that we're trying to make a good product that provides something that the city wants and the city is asking for, which is the density. However, trying to meet it in a way that still meets codes or meets the intent of code. So I, I'm happy to stand for any questions. You know, I'm just trying to do what I can to really support the site and, and try to work here. And I know the builder and the developer are open to creative solutions if there are any and the ability for that, if, if possible. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Wild?
You, you went over this in your first explanation of the sizes of these units. The largest of those units was, I want to say 2100 or just under 2100.
2,100 and change, yes.
That anticipated to be a three or four bedroom?
It's proposed as a two bedroom, two and a half bath. It, it has a loft area, which technically isn't a, isn't a bedroom portion, but.
So they're all about two and two?
They're, they're all two and two. I stand corrected. It is a three bedroom.
That one's three. Okay. The, the reason I ask that question is it's pretty easy to do some rough math about how many bedrooms drive, how many cars you have. So two bedroom units might have two cars and might have three, but a three bedroom units definitely going to have three cars probably. So I'm, I'm just throwing that out there that that kind of caused my thinking a little bit on the what we would do with a hammerhead or open spit, the adding parking in the hammerhead. I don't think that's an option for me.
Any other questions for the applicant? Do you happen to know the site, site utilization percentage of under building square footage versus the total site?
I believe I do. Or at least it should be in the staff report. If I'm not wrong, it's all right. I, there, there's all the percentages in there and let me see if I.
Okay. 27% of site. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now close the public hearing. This matter is now before the commission. We are a recommending body for this PUD. So we'll open it up to discussion. Commissioner Shepherd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think at first my concerns were with like the fire and the trash, being able to access it safely. It seems like that's been worked out. I think in my mind, when I was reading this, I was thinking the whole thing was just going to be 20 feet and not big enough, but since it does open into 26 feet, that seems to be okay. And I'm, I'm looking at the number six AB on the code adjustment requests that Hannah gave us before. Private street width reduction, a request to reduce the private street width from the required 26 feet to 20 feet inclusive of a pedestrian pathway or more than four units accessed off a common drive. I don't, I'm still kind of thinking that through because to me it seems like it's both, not, it's like an and, but maybe someone can help me with that. Are we supposed to choose one or the other? What's like whether we call it a private street or a common drive, right? So yeah, and I'm, I'm okay with having the internal placement of the street tree because there's no place to put it on the street. And then is it possible to get the picture back up that has the, I don't know, it's like the main one we were looking at. I don't know how to describe it. Yes, thank you. I mean, I think for me, I'm okay with the allowing the reduced buffer width for the perimeter landscaping, just because it seems like it's all internal. And if the people that are going to be living there, I mean, it's, if it's going to like, if we have to sacrifice another unit to have that, then I'm okay with keeping the unit and sacrificing the perimeter landscaping in this, in this case, because it's kind of back off the street anyway. I don't know what to do, say about the open space because it, it seems like it, there's just not, there's just not space there for it. And I'm curious what other, the other commissioners have to say about that. Like if, if they think that, that they should reduce it by a unit or if that should just be sacrificed. This is not too far from the Green Belt, right? Is this between Chindon and Adams Street? So that, that's where I'm at right now, but I'm curious there with the other. I'm okay with moving forward with this application with the code adjustment requests.
Thank you, Commissioner Shepherd. Commissioner Brown?
Okay. In the current format, I am in agreement with the staff's recommendation. I could not. I could not, on my own personal part, at this point in time, recommend this to the city council. And here are the reasons. I think we're trying to put too much on too little land. All kinds of things we're asking for waivers on, which is way beyond what I think is acceptable for a P U D process. And that was addressed by Hannah better than I can. So let me sort of sum it up. Parking. I think the parking is totally inadequate for the numbers that we're talking about. And especially as Commissioner next to me pointed out, on the days in which the Republic comes there to pick up trash, whether the, all of those bins are in the one parking space that they have for guests and everything. And for all the other things that you have people going there for. Or if they're hauled out onto the street, think about it. That, that whole street section there, including the sidewalk that's part of it, that's only twenty-six feet this wide there. So the bottom line is, there's really inadequate parking units. They were all compact cars. Now, we're standing the analysis that was presented to us about the particular things in the garage. Let's talk about the street and that, whether it's a street or a driveway. As Hannah pointed out, if we, if we wanted to adhere to some kind of a thing for our future, where that might be put through as part of the fixing up the streets in Garden City, uh, that really will be procured. And let me talk about that and the idea of whether this a can be a street or a driveway. It would have to put a classified as a driveway. And in one way, it's sort of irrelevant of whether A C H D would ever accept it. Uh, let me tell you about the following on the, with regard to that. I am the person that wrote all of their regulations they have about accepting streets. And if the street is decides that it is here, unless they totally change their policies that have been in place for thirty years, A C H D would not consider accepting it. Uh, like I say, I can't guarantee that that couldn't happen, but under their current policies that have been in place for thirty years, that would never be accepted for that. And, but that being said, if we, if we recommended to go forward, then my recommendation would, it would have to be classified, I think, as a common driveway. In which case we would have to agree to a waiver. So the bottom line, the street is too narrow. And that leads us to the, that's one, the next thing, the landscaping is totally inadequate when you think about it. One of the reasons, especially in, in the so-called landscaping that's, that's shielded off from the neighboring properties. That's one of the reasons why that street has got to be so narrow. If you, even if you allow for five feet in there, you're not gonna be part of that. You're not gonna be able to achieve it. So it's inadequate landscaping. It's definitely, I think it's inadequate in use of common space. Yes, the real only common space in the sense that might be available of why we require common space for this is that small piece that's on the left side of the hammerhead. And that we talked about it, I'm uh in agreement with Commissioner Wild to talk about putting that into parking. That really compounds that other problem that it really would result in no common space that was really usable. So that's the bottom line. I might be willing, I'm not sure on my own part to devote at this time, rather than voting uh totally against recommending disapproval would be some kind of a continuance, maybe to give the applicant an opportunity to, to come in, sit down with the staff and see what could be done to relax some of these things. But it looks to me like in order to do that, you're certainly have to redesign the size of the units, the number of units that you're going to put on this piece of property.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Wild.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Um, as so often happens, uh, over the years, I agree with Commissioner Brown. Um, I like this project. Uh, it's a difficult parcel. And the applicant has done a fantastic job trying to make it work. I just think um I don't know what the solution is, but I think a lot of solutions open up if there's one less unit. I'm not suggesting that that's what the applicant ought to do. Um, I'm just uh, looking at this and some of these, some of these issues that we're addressing. I think, I don't think the drive, uh, the, the driveway, the, the private drive doesn't have a solution by reducing the number of units, but a lot of the other issues that Commissioner Brown just addressed do. Um, I uh, as parking is the issue that I can't get around. These waivers are intended in the code to address P U Ds um for creativity and innovation. And I just feel like this is maybe shoehorning uh, a little bit too much into this property without uh, without the innovation and for, for those reasons. In addition to, you know, landscaping and open space that, that we've, we've asked some questions about. I I can't, I can't see myself recommending uh that this go forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Wild. Commissioner Smith.
Mister Chair, I agree with everything that's been said. I think it's too much on too little. I think um we can give on road width or parking or open space, but not all three. Something's got to give in this project. And the parking was the number one thing that stuck out for me. That road's going to get blocked. It's just going to happen. Um, so it needs to be reconfigured. Um, I think given the project where I think we could be really open would be in the open space. I'm not sure how much you gain from that odd little open space. I know some projects we've seen have done rooftop gardens or something like that, rooftop balconies or something to provide some kind of open space. So I, that's an area where I would be interested in being flexible, but the spacing needs to get fixed. Um, so I agree with Commissioner Brown. I think that can come back as either a redesign to come back to us for um another look, or um if that's not the case, then I would recommend denial at this point in the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Um, don't have a whole lot to add to this. Uh, I would echo what Commissioner Wild said on uh, thank you to the applicant for trying to maximize the site and, and being creative with it as much as possible. As far as parking, agree with what the commissioner said, that's an issue. Private drive seems like we can sort out. I, I don't have a problem with the entry. I think that you're limited on that, but when it bells out, um, you know, having cars that are sticking into the drive is certainly a problem. Uh, sidewalks, didn't really see that there's much that we can do aside from that. Landscaping, I do agree with Commissioner Brown inadequate. Um, it seems like for the P U D, we're looking for adjustments to other areas or mitigation. And what we're doing is we're just really um shoving as much under building square footage as we can. Open space, I'm not too concerned with the configuration. It does exceed ten percent, but having some more open space, um, is something of a topic that we would certainly need to sort out. Uh, waterway enclosure, I'm fine with it getting tiled, makes sense. So that's what I have on this matter. So any other items of discussion? I think, you know, Commissioner Brown discussing whether to continue this, whether we want to have a vote, see where we go or denial. Be open for discussion on that further and, and where the commissioner's at. So current form, I'd recommend denial or a continuance as well.
I'm, I'm open to uh I'm, I'm open to continuing it to a, a date certain for for revision.
Commissioner Shepherd.
After hearing from the other commissioners, I'm, I'm open to a continuance. I, um, when I came in here, I was thinking this was too much on too small of a space. Um, there's not a lot we can do about the driveway. That's just the way it is. Um, and I was kind of willing to leave it open to the market for if people, you know, wanted to have less parking. I, I don't want to move forward with recommending a denial, so I would be in it, I would be willing to recommend a continuance.
Commissioner Smith's thoughts?
I'm indifferent, Mister Chair.
Were you saying, uh, you know, potentially asking the applicant whether or not they'd be open to a continuance or staff? What process they would recommend?
Maybe worthwhile whether the applicant would prefer to carry on with the denial recommendation, if that's the way the commission is leaning, or if they prefer to that.
Or, because then they could appeal. You know, we'd much rather continuance. Thank you.
I, I think that's our answer, Mister Chair.
Staff, uh, any thoughts on continuance?
Um, uh, thank you, Chairman. Um, yes, uh, we would suggest that the October meeting would probably be way too quick for the applicant to um draft something for review and for staff to be able to review it. And so um bare minimum, a, a date would be November nineteenth, even though that might be November nineteenth, although that might be um, fast paced for the applicant for sure.
They can always continue as well, so. All right. Thank you. Any other discussion on this matter? All right, I'll entertain a motion if we're going to have one.
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Wild.
Let's take a stab. Uh, I move to uh defer S U B F Y twenty twenty-four dash six Edgmere subdivision to a date certain of November nineteenth uh for the applicant to have time to uh bring back some revisions.
Thank you, Commissioner Wild. And do we hear a second? I'll say, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on this item before we take it to vote? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and take this to vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any who knows, the ayes have it. Yep, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business. Item six on the agenda. So this is new business, public hearing action item A. C U P F Y two zero two five zero zero one two. Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture is requesting a conditional use for a dance studio at thirty-three hundred West Chindon Boulevard, located in the C one highway commercial zoning district. Mister Hatch, turn it over to you. Thank you, sir. Please state your name for the record. And uh, we are the deciding body for the C U P. All right. Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture, addresses two hundred west thirty-sixth street. I'll jive for the technical difficulties, but we want to make sure it's sharing to our virtual audience. Good evening, Chairman Montoya and Commissioners. Thank you for your consideration of our C U P this evening. Can everybody hear me? Our subject property is located along Chindon Boulevard. Uh, we have the Roots Market, which is directly to the west of us and thirty-third street to the east and Osage uh to the north. So for starters, I inherited this project. Uh, so I wasn't here from the beginning. So I apologize somewhat for having to have this presentation. But I think that this validly cleans up uh some concerns that Wyatt King expressed during our second plan review modification. So for clarification, last fall, I was approached by L E D to help them with the permitting process because their permits weren't getting done. And they were like, man, we really got to move into the space. We bought it. We're a nonprofit and can you please help us out? Uh, so he said, sure. And so we achieved a, a permanent approval in uh September. And for that, you can see here on our, our permit approval, we have it called L E D Performance Studio. The title block is Performance Studio. They have an occupancy load of a hundred and seventy-six, which is uh, you know, fairly decent amount of people. At that time, we were intending on having the rehearsal performance uh portion of the, the project, which is a, a large room for performing dance and allowing people to observe that under an artist's studio classification. That classification has kind of a limited performance scope, which at the time, which I wasn't at the pre-app, but it was understood based on the frequency of use and the limited amount of times that they would be using this for a performance use type space, that it would be categorized as a performance artist studio. And we achieved our permit, we started construction. During construction, they continued to fundraise for aspects of the project. And graciously, we're donated the ability to proceed with telescopic seating. What telescopic seating provides for this performance dance studio is the ability to uh, compress our public seating space, giving us more performance studio. And so the occupancy for that plan mod did not change from one seventy-six. We're still at one seventy-six. But it, it did change the arrangement of seating, uh, compressing our general public and increasing our ability to dance and perform. Our original permit was reviewed by Betty Gum. I feel that Betty Gum is a very, you know, talented and rigorous individual. I also have the assumption, because I wasn't there, that she probably was at this pre-application meeting and understood the context of this business strategy as an artist studio. And also reviewed these plans for the approval of one seventy-six. And also reviewed these plans for the approval of 176 and they were approved. Betty retires and Wyatt King comes in and Wyatt is like, you have 176 occupants with telescopic seating. I have concerns about parking. And I'm like, yeah, it makes all sense in the world. I have concerns about parking too. Um, I know by code, it's required to have 14 parking spaces. And they did get a cross-access agreement with Roots, which is right next door for 35 parking spaces. So we meet the code minimum requirement. This is a nonprofit trying to, to work and try to, uh, operate a business and they're now out of the actual operating of that business for about a year. And it'll be, uh, about an additional year in, in October. Um, so we're trying to balance the concern of the city, which I think is valid, and the capabilities of a nonprofit. So LED is a good neighbor and they're proactive and they want to address this concern. Hence, we're here today with the CUP. So the previous site, we just had some sweet, sweet gravel rock out front, a lot of concrete and asphalt. It is predominantly a building that dominates the entirety of the site. I would note that this is a city approved plan, site plan for that original approved permit for the artist studio. No improvements whatsoever. 176 people. When we got into submitting the concern from Wyatt was parking, and so we focused on parking and getting parking agreements. After submitting the CUP, it came to light that not only did we need to achieve parking, we needed to achieve the intent of a full-blown CUP, which was a little earth shattering for a nonprofit to say, wow, we're going to have to do a bunch of frontage improvements that we never anticipated. Never thought we were going to have to do, didn't come up in any of our previous meetings. And we're going to have to try to gather as a, as a community, uh, of artists to try to achieve something that reflects the intent and intention of the city beyond the parking concern. And we said, yeah, yeah, we're going to do that because we're a good neighbor. So from our original parking and site plan, there were some concerns, but we were thinking having a tree and some landscaping and a patio space. The other thing that typically comes up with that concern is parking. If we're going to have parking, we should have parking that is ADA accessible and have an accessible pedestrian frontage pathway to our entrance. Our, our entrance currently is not very accessible. So I said, well, let's create a new public entrance that fronts Chinon, connects to our parking lot, provides that ADA accessibility and connects this patio. So we can improve that, that existing storefront. So it's not a, a huge cost. But we can check a lot of boxes from an accessibility standpoint, presenting something that i- is more inviting to pedestrians and accessible to, um, our, uh, you know, disabled individuals. With that, uh, there were a range of comments about the landscaping plan, uh, one of which was to propose a tree on our corner, which we impede in our vision triangle. In discussing with Jenna, we feel that we can plant that tree, additional tree. It would need to be properly pruned, similar to having like a power pole in your line of sight for a vision triangle. Um, so anything, uh, below from, from ground level to eight feet needs to be properly trimmed and pruned. But we feel that we can achieve that tree and maintain that in an appropriate manner. And so we would be proposing to satisfy the intent of the, um, the tree count along Chinon, as well as addressing the ADA public right of way concerns. And also the, you know, the quantity of landscaping required for the site. The discussion with ITD, we reached out to them for comments and their original comment was, you have nothing in our right of way. And we said, okay, but we're going to a public hearing and that's not a very good response. So we fall back up and we said, based on our concept and the consideration of having potentially increased landscaping where we currently had walking path, would that require any improvements or any considerations for ITD? Kind of doubling down on a response that was vague and trying to get something that is more appropriate for this commission. Their response was ITD will not require any improvements in the right of way. So giving you a more valid response from ITD. Shifting gears to 33rd Street. Along 33rd Street, that particular roadway jurisdiction as well as Osage is governed by Ada County Highway District. Ada County Highway District's comment was that ACHD is not going to require any improvements along 33rd. And they also had concerns about the constructibility of any requested improvements along that roadway. So we have our landscape improvements down here. And, you know, currently for part of the discussion today, we would be proposing to maintain our existing sidewalk and existing features along 33rd. Soon as we touch that, then we got to do stormwater. Then we got to hire a civil engineer. Then we're talking buko bucks for a nonprofit, which scares me. And so I think from a feasibility standpoint, and actually from ACHD standpoint, we feel that we would like to propose to this commission, um, maintaining that in its current state. The consideration is, is there is an existing sidewalk there as well, which was one of the requirements, uh, along 33rd, along landscaping and other things that we would be requesting consideration for some leniency. I'll, I'll recap that in a moment. Then we have Osage. Along Osage, there is a request for two, uh, street trees as, as well as proper screening for our electrical panel and also our trash enclosures. So we did find for about 200 bucks, there's a very adorable looking trash enclosure that we can get at Home Depot readily available. So I think that's achievable for fundraising. And then there is an alternate compliance for public murals that we feel would satisfy the intent, uh, in lieu of the trees and also achieve the screening that we need along the meters. And so we would be proposing to create a mural along Osage, uh, to camouflage that and make it a more vibrant facade, but also to screen our, uh, requested, uh, meters that need to be screened. So here are a couple of examples of what that screening could look like. Here you have some camouflage downspouts. Here you have a camouflage HVAC unit and some conduits. And so we would just be blending it into the facade. So then we get back to the concern, which I think, you know, Wyatt hit it on the head. We should probably figure out a parking agreement for this performance studio that wants to actually have shows and events that would host people. And so working with the city, we started with like 150, 160, uh, parking agreements. They didn't like some of those because they're across Chinon. I tend to agree that there's some impracticality without some major infrastructure improvements. So we just nixed all those because, uh, the logistics is so complex. So then, uh, the consideration was, okay, well, you need to have them on the north side of the road. And they all need to be within rocking distance and have a reasonable pedestrian, uh, right of way access to the facility. And so we settled on the ones that are highlighted here. And you can see our location and relationship to it, all of those. So we have our parking agreement for Roots. We have our ADA parking and our public right of way connection. By code, we're required 14 parking spaces. We can satisfy and above and beyond the requirements for our ADA parking on Roots alone, as well as our bike parking, which is required for that density of people. It would be great if we had 176 people show up for this on bike. And that's a concern for the city. Roots has that, that, that parking for bikes available. And so we would be just proposing to modify our parking agreement with them for the bicycle parking as well. We also got our parking with the yoga studio for an additional eight. We got our parking agreement with Fluff Hardware for an additional 30. We got our parking agreement with Lynn and, and Loot for an additional six. And so. So in total, we have 80 parking spaces i- in agreement, uh, for the space. I'm talking with, uh, Jenna and Jenna can probably elaborate on this. We have 100 and, and 30 telescopic seating spaces, a couple balcony areas as well. And so our sales are approximately 140, uh, tickets for an event. And, you know, just to be safe, I think the staff report says 150. So if we were, we're proposing, you know, a, a realistic, uh, parking requirement of, you know, maybe a third of that, that's a 50 parking spaces, which means we exceed that parking by 30 parking spaces. We're saying half, we're still exceeding it by five parking spaces. So we're proposing a solution that gives a surplus of parking for the use of this. And so in, in contrast, I spoken in, uh, concern to a design review application about a year ago for the Bardane. And that particular facility is open eight to 12 hours a day, every day, uh, for an entire month. And they were approved with 20 spaces on site for 194 seats, which is a deficiency of 174 parking spaces. Versus ours, which is a surplus of either five or 20. And in stark contrast, based on the events that LED is proposing, about, you know, conservatively at most about four a month, uh, about two to three hours for each of those equates to approximately one and a half days of congestion compared to 30 days of congestion that Bardane creates. That was approved by code. This was approved by code of 14. So we're not here necessarily for code compliance. We're here because this will be an issue if we don't sort it out in the parking agreement and this CUP is the mechanism to try to find something that we can do to be a better neighbor. So in, oh, went too far. Nope, it's, there we go. Um, so in conclusion, we view the staff report generally speaking, or in favor of all the conditions of approval, wish we could accept them all, but we did have four that we had some, some requests. On eight, if, uh, have the proposed solution with the additional tree is acceptable for Chinon, we would be replacing nine B on, um, 33rd, item number eight would be replacing that. So that would be probably the main, main consideration because we're posing a sidewalk there. Uh, item 11, uh, to be removed. That one is the street trees on the back of Osage, which we're achieving by al- alternate compliance. And then, uh, item 15A, we would be modifying that from the requested 150 parking spaces. And, and updating that to the 80, which we were able to provide. And I will stand for any questions. Thank you, Mr. Hatch. Any questions for the applicant?
Miss, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brown.
Uh, Mr. Hatch, thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, have you, your request for changes, did you get an opportunity to read the, I, the drafted option B so-called decision document?
I did, and.
Are, are those numbers there relative to the original or to the altered one?
The altered one.
They are to the older one. Uh, so you would have those in addition to the other change that would already would occur based on the older document. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Beyond that, uh, and I will, I'll, we'll have an opportunity when Jenna comes up to look at it, but and if you look on the assessor's documentation on the property, am I correct in saying that the property lines, I will call it the west side where Roots are and on the east side is along 33rd? The property line corresponds with the wall. Is that correct?
Chairman Montoya, Commissioner Brown, um, we haven't formally surveyed this. Uh, from the informal survey that we do have, it, it does not appear to be directly on the wall. It appears to be maybe 10 inches off.
Essentially it's on the wall. Is that correct? So the only property that's not covered by the building is a little bit of property in the front and in the back along Os- Osage, which is pretty much, there's a existing concrete slab that you can see, uh, on Google world. That's really the only property that's not covered by the building. Is that correct?
Commissioner Brown, we do have, uh, that frontage portion, which we intend to landscape. And in talking to IT, we were going to rip out a little bit of asphalt and increase that landscaping as well. Um, so we are intending to be code compliant with the required landscaping on site. And in addition to that, in, in talking with IT, they're okay with us ripping that portion out and increasing, uh, the landscaping.
So, so let me pursue that because that was something I was going to address. So they're okay with you taking out portion of the asphalt. Uh, I believe, in fact, I'm pretty positively sure ITD's pro, uh, their right of way includes the concrete sidewalk and the asphalt pathway. And.
Commissioner Brown, I thought so too, in talking with, uh, ITD. There's ends at the back of the original sidewalk. Um, so that additional asphalt strip would be a portion of our property that has an additional uh, frontage sidewalk on it, which we'd be utilizing for access to our entry. And we are eliminating a portion of that to increase our landscape.
Yeah, that, they are okay with that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, or that second email that I said that we resented to them showed that and clarified with them in writing that they were okay with that.
Okay, uh, another question. Are you familiar at all with the drainage on that? Am I correct in saying that 99% of the grain is what falls on the roof? Is that correct?
It is a generality, Commissioner Brown, but yes, you are correct.
And this is just from observation in, in Google world. As we, uh, we're currently sitting here right now, those downspouts, you show one of them on, on the mural that you're going to put, that's, that's going to be sort of camouflaged. Those downspouts, the, at least the ones that are on 33rd and the one in the back, they're not functioning properly right now. Is that correct? I think they're broken.
I have the general contractor here. I don't know if you can respond. To best my knowledge, they should be working.
All right, with that, we'll, we're good. Probably going to wind up talking about a little bit more when we get in the rebuttal. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Hatch, can you scroll up just so that I can identify the conditions that you're looking for? Thank you. Just right there. Yeah. So it's just really adjusting three and moving one. Any other questions for Mr. Hatch? Thank you, Mr. Hatch. Thank you very much. Now we will hear from Ms. Thurnborough.
Ms. Thurnborough.
All right, um. Chairman and members of the commission, thank you for your time tonight, and I do know that we have a very long agenda, so I will try to be brief and rely. Um on um. What has been discussed by Mr. Hatch to the most uh to the best extent that I can. Uh possibly, as he noted, uh staff has classified the suggested that it's a commercial entertainment facility rather than an artist's studio. Um as based on on uh definitions within code, and that does require a conditional use permit. Um. In the world of land use and zoning, it can be confusing all of these different uh. Uh tools that we're discussing, so previously we discussed. A plan unit development, now we're discussing a conditional use permit or in-state uh legislation, a special use permit. Um what a conditional use permit is, is that uh code within the different zoning districts. Identify uses that are. Um by right permitted, um and then by absolutely precluded. And then there are these uses called conditional uses or special uses. Um that may be allowed uh through this quasi judicial process. If it's determined that the use is appropriate for the specific site. And in conformance with code, and so there is that conformance with code um component. However, uh we also have a lot of legally. Um non-conforming uh structures and uses within the city. That are balanced out through the review process. And um so this commission is tasked with. Um determining whether or not a use is appropriate. At a given location and and how to get that to use in conformance with code, so there might be a whole list of. Um conditions to try to to achieve that code compliance. And one thing that I would like to bring out is state statute does allow for phasing of conditions as well, i- and just to keep that. In the back of your mind, um. And um. And this uh application um is. Ideal for the comprehensive plans designation of um the activity node, the Live, Work, Create District and Green Boulevard corridor. Um the the use of art in the Sorel Mitchell uh district, Live, Work, Create District. Um and bringing people down and having vibrancy really is. Um something that the you couldn't script better if you're looking at the comprehensive plan. Um but the staff report, and and I do have to note that uh the staff that was lead on this was Maria. Anne Genova, um but she couldn't be here tonight, and so I am presenting to you. Um but in her staff report, is I believe she very acutely uh looked at uh parking. And pedestrian safety and landscaping improvements. Um as something that will probably elicit a fair amount of discussion uh tonight. Um this was the the parking areas that were initially um. Uh proposed and what we have on file is the proposals. Uh where parking could be located. Um and first and foremost, uh there's some concern. Um related to crossing uh Chindon Boulevard. Um while the city has um. Requested that there be crossings of Chindon, um and one is potentially proposed at thirty-third Street or Thirty-second Street. Um that may not happen for a long time. Um and even if there is the crossing, um without other uh features such as lighting, et cetera. Um staff is not sure that that is the most safe uh scenario. Um this is an image, and it should be pretty close um from the assessor's office, uh showing the property boundaries. Um of of this location um and how it relates, and and so. Um while it's not a formal survey, you can see that the this the existing non-conforming structure. Uh creates quite a few constraints uh for the site um. Including parking and landscaping and where to place a a trash enclosure. Bardany uh tends to be coming up quite a bit tonight. Um but ITD and Garden City Staff, um Development Services and Public Works. Have uh really looked at how to implement uh code requirements along Chindon. And this is a perfect example on this side of how uh code can be implemented on Chindon. Um some of the constraints uh for trees are that um. There's an irrigation canal underneath, and that's why Bardany put their trees back towards the structure. And left this area um to sidewalk. Um and understandably, on thirty-third Street. Um there are constraints there where a sidewalk, any sidewalk. Except for the existing one that's onsite. Um location would likely need to be in the ACHD right-of-way, as well as any uh potential plantings would uh need to. Uh be approved and work with uh ACHD for those improvements. Um it is standard that we will see sidewalks installed. In the right-of-way as well as landscaping with license agreements. And ACHD did send an email, and they did say that they were concerned about constructability. But they did not elaborate on if there was a design they were looking at, if that was. Um in its entirety, or what that uh email uh was intended to say. Uh we reached out and said, we have a couple of days to meet, and and that meeting just never occurred, so staff can't. Um opine more of what they meant, other than that is true, what Mr. Hatch had said, that that email. Uh was submitted to the city. And then Osage has its constraints as well. Uh these pictures were put in the slide before uh Mr. Hatch had indicated uh that the preference would be. Not to put trees um in in that back area, and so this is an example of. Another location in Garden City where trees have been placed in Osage recently. Um but in case we need to refer to it, uh this this slide is available. Um this is just showing what that overall width looks like. And the space um that we're dealing with. Um. Today, um you were sent an option B that's already been referenced in the draft uh potential decision document. And um. In in that, um in that it was sent as a late exhibit, you have it before each of you tonight, if you need to reference it. Um but there does need to be some uh reconciliation on the conditions that you initially uh received for review. And speaking uh to our city clerk, a special event permit. Um isn't really necessarily the correct uh tool to use, and so a temporary certificate of occupancy would be a tool. Um and that LED could use, um should this application move forward. And um in that, I do know that they have an event scheduled here soon, and may not be able to achieve. Um all of the conditions in time. And. So then I think we may have uh dealt with number fifteen already. Um and the draft condition. Um there is a condition that for the duration. Um that. Either there needs to be a crossing of Chindon installed for parking to be considered. Uh south of Chindon, or. Um the the commission could find that that just would not be appropriate at all. And then there are some alternative uh conditions that are highlighted in green in the draft that was submitted to you. Um and I think the first one uh we can deal with based on uh just. Um strike those potential changes based on my discussions with Mr. Hatch. Um late this afternoon. Um it sounds uh like um. Their preference would to be to keep the trash enclosure um onsite, and you saw that they have. Um a way to conceal or create an enclosure. And so the changes to condition number three that are in green are unnecessary. Um there's a a condition number four to address stormwater. Um again, we're dealing with an existing uh non-conforming structure, um presumably legally non-conforming structure. And um instead of having the applicant try to address a whole new storm uh water. Uh system on with in very limited space. It could potentially be an undue burden to have to take down half of the building to be able to do that. Um and in full disclosure, this was um in discussions uh with Commissioner Brown, um he let me know ahead of time. That um he would prefer to see an alternative um. That would allow for that existing stormwater uh structure to be utilized instead of advance it into current code. Uh requirements. And um then I believe that uh Mr. Hatch's. Presentation uh takes care of uh condition changes to condition number six. If they are able to execute the agreement. Uh with roots to allow for bike parking to be um on their property. But that condition just notes that uh wherever that bicycle parking is identified, that it should be within two hundred feet. Um that's a pretty big allowance, and my research, it it seems that um. For standard temporary bike parking, so not where you would go and have covered parking for your bike. But if you go to an event, uh people tend to walk about fifty to a hundred feet is the the preference, and so that two hundred feet is a pretty generous. Allowance. Um. And then we've already uh spoken about condition number eight. Uh which Mr. Hatch is asking that you address um uh his solutions. To thirty-third Street. Um. Oh. The one other thing on a reconciliation, and we did note that uh the the previous decision document did have a. What I would consider a high requirement for parking at a hundred and fifty spaces. Um a use such as this, a more standard parking ratio might be a one to three. Anywhere between a one to two and a one to four, and so split the middle, uh one to three is what. Um staff is suggesting tonight at fifty-nine, uh which is uh well below what the applicant is suggesting be the number tonight. Um staff, which suggests that the allowance of use of bullbouts would be appropriate for trees, should ACHD allow for them. Um that way, there could still be some parallel parking. Um adjacent or adjacent to the site on thirty-third Street. And there's also a condition that if there is no way to achieve uh street ch- trees whatsoever. Per review with staff and ACHD uh per conditions, then perhaps a small buffer uh of. Brandial plants similar to the Bardany buffer between the travelway. And uh the sidewalk uh would be appropriate. I do want to point out, if this picture shows it. May not. And some real constraints with the sidewalk, so the sidewalk. Isn't really coming along the building. And then there's a pretty big drop-off, and so staff would suggest um. That the sidewalk uh along thirty-third Street, even if the existing location is to be utilized. Um has some severe ADA defects as well as connectivity defects that would need to be addressed. And maybe. This might be the best. This better shows um that where you can see that there's the sidewalk here against the front portion of the structure. Um and then it's disconnected and kind of dead ends into the building, and then there's some real elevation um back here in this section. Um. Um and then condition number fifteen. Um was suggested by a a commissioner after reading through uh the materials. Um and provided staff a condition that there be signage on Chindon noting that crossing. Is dangerous and that the nearest crossing is at thirty-sixth Street. And. I apologize, I wrote down that nine B was requested to be amended, but not. And to add the for, oh, if the large tree, so if the trees. Um if the one would be allowable. Um code does require a one per fifty lineal heat of trees adjacent to right-of-way, and so staff hasn't had the time. To analyze if that one tree is appropriate, or not appropriate, if it is code compliant. Um and. Uh it sounds like eleven can be stricken if they're utilizing. Uh the mural along Osage and Luke and excuse me, and in place of uh. Um the street trees. And. Then fifteen A uh could be amended uh to the applicant's uh requested number of total. Uh parking. And staff would be supportive of that uh to be reduced down to. Maybe, was it maybe? Um and staff would even suggest fifty-nine uh would be a fair number. Um. The potential actions that the commission uh can take tonight are to approve the application as applied for. Approve with conditions as drafted or amended, or deny the application, or as in last application, if you have additional materials. Uh that you need to see, or prior to making your decision, you could continue this application. And with that, I stand for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Ms. Thurnborough. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Brown.
Uh Mr. Chairman, uh first of all, I wanna I wanna commend Jenna. Uh for a very quick reaction to my calling her because of my concern about some of the requirements that we were putting on. She did a really great job of. Uh putting what I told her into effect. Um I do have a a couple of questions relative to the. Mr. Hatch's presentation. That was based upon the new requirements and. Other than number eleven, which I agree, uh and I understand how that's taken care of. Um. His other proposals. I'm not exactly clear on what what are your thoughts about any of those, or they reflected in what you were just saying, and. And would they be consistent with what you're showing us?
Uh, Chairman Commissioner Brown, um, so on Chindon, um, my hunch is probably. But I haven't had time to, to um. Give you a definitive, look to give you a definitive answer, but I can't imagine that that frontage is beyond a hundred feet. Um, but that, that would be a concern if it is, it would require another tree. And then uh, I do have concerns on, on the thirty-third street. Um, I do recognize that it is hard to do improvements. Um, however, uh, I think that sidewalk on thirty-third is deficient. As is, and so there, uh, I would suggest that staff review a proposal. Um, and a- again, I want to bring to your attention that phasing is, is something that state statute allows. For um, conditions within a conditional use permit. If that's something that you feel would still achieve safety um, and um, couldn't help meet the conditions. Um, but because of the disconnectedness and because it ramps up and then goes. Like dead ends into the building, I don't believe that that is a sufficient um, solution. And I think there are ways that potentially they could achieve at least some of the trees that are required. Through the one per fifty standard uh, that's in code through either bull bouts. Or um, if ACHD would allow um, uh. A treatment more akin to the photo that um, Split Rail did on, on their property. And I'm happy to pull that up if that helps.
I don't think so. I think I, I will, uh, if we were to do something like that. What you're suggesting perhaps is some kind of a wording that would enable them to discuss it with the staff. Correct? Now, along with ACHD, ACHD is gonna have to be involved.
Um, and Chairman Commissioner Brown, I believe that that isn't, I, I believe that the conditions would allow for that. Um, and so that condition related to thirty-third street. Is uh, number eight. Um, and the, and that's in green.
Right.
So DA.
I think, I think that, that's adequate for now. I'm gonna, we'll probably have a discussion in the rebuttal part. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Jenna. Thank you for this um, information. Um, I s-. I saw when you were talking about the sidewalk on thirty-third street, how it was um. I didn't see very clearly on the picture, but it's like, it's not ADA accessible is what my understanding. Is the roots? Like ADA parking with the pedestrian pathway, is that sufficient like if for people that maybe needed a ramp or um. How, to make it safe for people? Like if they, they'd have to go around the building if, if they're approaching from that side, but.
Um, Chairman Commissioner Shepherd, um, it's my understanding that Ms. Antonova. Um, did review ADA requirements for site distance, but did not verify. That uh, there, there aren't um, any, any other constraints that would preclude. That it's truly an ADA compliant route between the two. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Mr. Chair, um, just a very quick clarification. The, I know we've been drawing comparisons to some of the surrounding um, buildings there. But Bardane and the one that's next to it, the wine bar, those are all permitted within the zone, right? So those can come through as conditional use permits.
And Chairman Commissioner Smith, you're exactly right. Those were, those were permitted uses. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it. We'll now open it up for public testimony. I do see that we do have some signup sheets for this item and some of those that would like to testify. So has any, has everybody had a chance to fill out the signup sheets if you wish to testify? All right, so we do have two uh, for the record. Looks like we have one more. Uh, Leanna Duval supports the application, does not wish to testify. Is that correct? Which may not be here. And then Jeff Hatch, thank you for doing yours. Appreciate it. Uh, Solmar Palm supports the application, does not wish to testify, has a statement as a neighboring business and property owner. And was in support of the application being approved. I believe this venue and project is aligned with the goals of the live work. Create district and will have a positive impact in the area. Thank you. Then we have. Devin Dibaloi. Uh, supports the application, does not wish to testify, correct? So with that, I believe that we have one person from the public that would like to testify, Derek Hurd. Uh, again, when you approach, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, I should have just had you read my comments. It might have been quicker, but uh. Derek Hurd, one-one-two East Thirty-third in Garden City. Chairman Commissioners, thank you for your volunteer time. Uh, I just said my name and address. I'm speaking as a private individual and property owner just a block away. On one side of the street of this project and two blocks away on the other side of the street. I'm here tonight to offer my enthusiasm, enthusiastic support for our new neighbors and this application. Um, all I see in this application packet is solutions and accommodations for a difficult site. Uh, Mr. Hatch and staff have worked hard and done a great job of presenting solutions and answers. Answers to move this application forward. Thank you, thank you for your attention and eventual approval of this application.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else from the public wish to testify on this item? All right, seeing none, then we will go ahead and turn it back over to Mr. Hatch for your rebuttal.
Chairman Montoya and Commissioners, thank you for your consideration. Based on uh, the public testimony, I did have a, a couple considerations. Uh, Commissioner Brown, to, to your concern, our intent uh. With this remodel, we did re-roof the entire building. And the gutter and downspouts are all being uh, repaired and replaced. So they would be operational. That is the intent. I liked. Jenna's consideration of, of modifying fifteen A to fifty-nine spaces. Um, the consideration is. These are with properties, those properties are subject to change in the future. And some of our agreements are for like eight parking spaces and six parking spaces. And so if we can give other properties less encumbrance. I want to be able to give them that flexibility to do that and sometime decommission those. If there's a greater and better use for those properties that deemed to need those parking spaces to be able to utilize that property. Uh, so if the commission is, it finds fifty-nine spaces to be acceptable. We more than satisfy that now and we would intend to maintain that quantity threshold. Um, and then, and then lastly, as far as the concern on thirty-third. Um, and I'll, and I'll have the owner come up and, and kind of elaborate a little bit as well. Um, on thirty-third, we, per our code analysis, we have exiting off of thirty-third. Onto the public sidewalk for emergency egress path. We've achieved that based on the existing sidewalk. The portion of non-conforming. Uh, area of the property on thirty-third is a loading zone that we use for moving. Uh, equipment in and out of the facility and is not intended to promote pedestrian activity. Because we have uh, a lot of artists that are moving equipment back and forth. And we would prefer not to have that conforming because it actually is safer not having people over there. Fact that we've now invested a substantially uh, the greater amount of time, effort. Cost and energy into making the front of the building more accessible and accessible from the public right away. As well from our uh, ADA parking spaces on routes. Our intention is to have uh, ADA accessible um, thoroughfare. Um, so with that, the, the intent of the sidewalk on thirty-third is really just for an emergency egress standpoint. Which the current configuration works fine for. Uh, and the current loading also works fine. The consideration for any drastic improvements on thirty-third, my main concerns are cost. To a nonprofit that was already mid-construction, two-thirds done with construction and then was encumbered with this conditional use. Um, and so I think with that, if I could have Andrew come up and, and speak a little bit about uh, the nature of their business and, and this process.
Yeah, can you just state your name for the record?
It's Andrew Stensis. The, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. And commit, oh, and my address, my personal address. Three-five-two-two West Windsor Drive, Boise, Idaho. Um, my wife and I started this company about ten years ago. Uh, she's a dancer, phenomenal dancer. I'm just the lowly musician, but we um, we create art and so we. We acquired this building. We're really excited about it. We've been in Boise for ten years. And um, we've been on this journey together this whole time. Um, and now that we've acquired this building, it's a space that. I think was confusing to get a conditional use permit, but we understand why. There's a lot of people that are gonna become. Or becoming to, to witness performances that we have, but in some ways we. We felt like we've, we fit into that art studio category considering that it's uh. Defined by individuals or group of individuals, creating original work and showcasing it to the public. I know that, that probably means visual art for the most part, but we, we do performances and so. Our audience has to be all there at once to see what we create. Um, but it is, the conditional use permit, I think is um. Kind of, I guess, gives it the feel that we're gonna have like a nightclub type of thing happening and. And that's not really what we do. I think twenty percent of the time uh, in that space will be uh, performances that we, we put together. For one, we can't put that many performances together uh, over the course of a year. Um, but uh, eighty percent of the time uh, should be rehearsals and uh, internships. And um, residencies with artists. So that, that is a big part of our nonprofit scope is to foster young artists and, and uh. Semi-pro professional artists to come into our space and use it and have a space that they can, they can showcase their work to the public as well. Um, but yeah, that's, that's all I wanted to say about it. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, as a consideration, if the commission was to approve our conditional use, just kind of recapping those. Minor adjustments to our conditions of approval. The consideration, if possible, of um. Replacing item eight with our proposed solution on thirty-third. On item nine B, in the staff report, it elaborates on a very. Elaborative frontage, which would require removing our sidewalks. And adding benches and planters and all kinds of public art similar to what uh, Split Rail had. And so our intent with that is to meet the code, like we're, we're fine adding the two trees. And the landscaping density and the patio to create this neighborhood node. We feel our solution is, is in the, the vein and style of that expectation and can meet a lot of the code compliance. Um, so that would be why we're proposing that to solution um, for item nine B. We already discussed item eleven and fifteen A as well, but um, just wanted to, to say. You know, in, in, in general, um, we feel that these adjustments would be achievable by a nonprofit and also responsive. Not only for the nonprofit, the city's expectation, but also the community for a vibrant performance studio. And uh, I'll stand for any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hatch. Uh, I just wa- I do have a question on, for clarification on one of the conditions. So prior to occupancy, two A has the six hundred amp CT cabinet not being visible. So is that, you're proposing that would be the mural? Is that correct?
Chairman Montoya, that is correct. We would be doing mural on that facade to conceal that or screen it in a camouflage solution.
Okay, so that would be two A. And then also. Staff made mention to the frontage of, so number eleven, the frontage of Osage Street shall have a total of two class trees. You're recommending removal, but we could say as well that a mural would be in place of the trees.
We would be proposing, Chairman Montoya, that the mural would be the alternate solution in replace of those trees.
Okay.
As you can see from the photo, we got power lines there as well. There's a lot of reasons why we don't want to do that.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Hatch, on the parking, I looked at the agreements. Is it correct that those are not easement agreements for parking? They are, they can be withdrawn at any time. They're, they're just general agreements with the owners of those lots?
Uh, Chairman Smith, I am not an attorney, so I don't know how, I, I can barely read and draw a living. So I don't know if I can speak accurately about that.
Okay, um. Do you, do you know the underlying nature of the agreement? Are these donated? Are they being rented purchased? I mean, how, how, what, what, what are these, what are these spots doing?
Uh, Chairman Montoya, Commissioner Smith, the in, the intent was, we went out and we talked to the community of business owners here and said, hey, this is what we're doing. These are the hours we'll be doing it and we need parking. Would you allow us to do that? And so we established in writing agreements with these businesses to confirm on both uh, a legal standing of the quantity. And also the legal standing of the location of the intended parking.
Okay.
And so these uh, businesses have willingly encumbered their properties for this use.
And it looks like the documents themselves refer to events. Is it the idea that staff and folks who are going every day as opposed to just people coming to performances? Would they also be parking in these spots that are being used in the other locations?
So the performances themselves, the people that would be utilizing, that would be utilizing routes. And so for day-to-day activities, the, the quantity of parking that Roots has is sufficient for their use and, and Roots use. That doesn't seem to be an issue and we would be modifying that agreement with our, our bike parking as well. The balance of the parking agreements, uh, the intent is really for those performance uses where we have. Uh, a, a program that people are coming to and so we would have a higher intensification of parking need.
Okay, so Roots, it just looks like Roots is only allowing parking between seven PM by the AM. So if you have the one spot, where, where is, where are your daily folks gonna park if they can't park at Roots?
Well, we can adjust that parking agreement accordingly, but yeah, we could get seven parking spaces on a eight to five. Or something of that nature. I think Commissioner Smith, you bring up a, another very valid concern.
Excellent. I enjoy doing that. Thank you.
Uh, to answer your question, we are, weren't happy to resolve that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Brown.
Mr. Chairman. Could you have put up that where you summarize the, about the four different areas that you were, you were still proposing a change? From an option B. So I can, myself and the other commissioners can understand. I'm going under the assumption that we will be operating with option B and uh. In order to do that, I really like, I like the idea of this whole development. I would like to see it going. But I need to understand exactly how we would change this. These documents, so. This summarizes the ones that you think need to be changed, right?
Correct. Chairman Montoya and Commissioner Brown, just kind of recap. Uh, item eight, we would be uh, proposing to replace with our current proposed solution. We provide exhibits of that solution to, to the uh, staff based on the presentation tonight. Item nine B, our intent is that this needs code, so we want to add that tree. We're fine adding the two trees. Item nine B, our intent is that this needs code, so we want to add that tree. We're fine adding the two trees. Um, if it comes to pass that.
Slow down a second, just in a place.
If if it comes to pass, working with staff that one tree is required, I would um. Uh, consider removing that tree just from the vision triangle, but if two are required, we would be happy to maintain that. If this commission wants the two trees, we are fine with that condition of approval for nine B, but. Our proposed solution with the with patio, with the landscaping, um, rocks out front and increasing that with the ITD. Um, uh, landscaped area as well would be what we'd be proposing on Chindon. Item eleven to be struck, that's that alternate compliance for the mural in the back. And then item fifteen A, we'd be modifying that to uh a gracious fifty-nine parking spaces.
Instead of a vice a hundred and fifty.
Correct, it would be fifty-nine.
You uh. And then all the other changes that uh Jenna put in there, you you were good with them, right?
We do. And in addition to that, probably somewhere around fifty-nine, we would want to address an item for uh Commissioner Smith's concern. Uh, ensuring that our our fourteen required parking spaces have hours of operation uh appropriate to the use. So our day-to-day folks have a place.
Where would we insert that?
So fifteen uh talks about the parking agreement. It would probably be a a item uh down the line on item fifteen.
And it would specifically do?
It would, it would uh provide uh parking. Or a required fourteen parking spaces. The majority of the people that will be utilizing this for performances will be folks coming out of town, staying at hotels. And either carpooling or using Ubers to get here. But with that consideration, there there are going to be employees and staff that are here on a day-to-day basis. So I think. Meeting the intent of code, stipulating it as fourteen parking spaces that we can find operationally seems agreeable. If you guys want to reduce that, that just makes my life easier.
Okay, alright, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Alright, thank you, Mr. Hatch.
Thank you.
We'll now close the public hearing. This matter is now before the commission. We are deciding body for this CUP, so. What about Commissioner Smith?
Well, I certainly like the project. I think it's, I think it's fantastic for the community. Um. I really narrowed uh zeroed in on the parking concerns. I have some thoughts on that. Um. I'm fine with all of the other modifications. I think the mural is a great alternative. Um, I'm sure that would be beautiful from the street and for the. Surrounding buildings. Um, on the parking. I think that it's an interesting project because the reason why it requires a conditional use is because it is an entertainment center. Involve so many people and so much parking, but that's not all the time. It's only during performances. So you have to weigh that against, well, what is the normal use? You take somewhere like Bardane, which is a. A automatically approved use. It doesn't require a conditional use permit. And they're only required to have fourteen spots. And you could argue that, well, they're a lot busier on a day-to-day basis, even though this will be very busy. You know, i- in certain times. So trying to balance all of that together. What I don't like is that there are other, I think there's one. One parking spot that is actually legally guaranteed for the property because all of the others are. Can be withdrawn, can change with ownership tomorrow, could just disappear. So I would like to see some. I would like to see the remaining thirteen to bring us to the fourteen, and I'd like to see those in the form of an easement agreement with. Roots or or with anyone who's who's willing to do it. And by easement, what I mean is an agreement that runs with the land and obligates the landowner to provide that. It's not just a passing. A passing agreement. Um, I've seen those in a lot of other projects. They're great. It guarantees parking for whoever occupies the building. Um, I'm sure it could be drafted in a way that said until i- if and until an alternative parking is determined or whatnot. Um, that that would be what I would like to see to make this work. Um, otherwise. I have concerns about the sustainability of the parking. Um, I don't believe that fourteen is an absolute required number because we're in conditional use land. Um, so I would be fine reducing that number if. If the applicant comes back and said, hey, I couldn't get fourteen, but I can get eight. Yeah, I can live with that. Um, but I would like to see something a little more concrete than just a passing little one-page. Sure, you can use our parking agreement because I worry that's not sustainable. Um, other than that, I think as conditioned, it's a great project.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Wild?
I'm uh. I'm always impressed by people who want to keep coming to Garden City. I moved here twenty-eight years ago and could not have ever imagined. What Chindon is turning into. So I'm I'm supportive of this project and the CUP. Um, I I've got so many notes here about conditions changing. Um, I probably won't be the maker of the motion. Um. Uh, but I think Commissioner Smith probably brought up a really good point about. Uh, whatever, eight to five, nine to five, ten to five um parking spaces. And um, I I don't, I uh. Kim and I will probably agree to disagree on the idea of an easement because I think um to the extent that. Parking falls below the conditions that we set at fifty-nine and fourteen. They lose their CUP. So I think that will uh ensure that whatever agreements they write are not revocable. And uh they are enforceable. So um I'm generally, I I won't go through each of these conditions that we're talking about changing. But uh I am supportive.
Thank you, Commissioner Wild. Commissioner Brown?
Alright, first of all, I I want to echo what Commissioner Wild said. I really, I like this. Way better than an empty building that that building has been. For quite a while, quite a bit. And uh, I think it. I think originally, I think it's a very difficult site. In fact, I wrote on here when I first looked at it. This site, the way the building is, takes up the whole site, is an incredible problem in which we're requiring. The applicant to do way more than he's able to do physically or anything, including. Problem of getting into cross Chindon. We've been trying to solve that problem for a long time and. And uh, we haven't been able, then we, it's like a number one or number two thing on our priority list for years. That we want to have more crossings across Chindon, but unfortunately it belongs to ITD. And they don't have any money for it, and the legislature made it even harder for them to spend their money on crosswalks. So. That's why I went to that. I went to the trouble of calling Jenna up and said we need to do something better than what we're doing. And she really responded. So. Having said that, there are a couple of changes that I want to suggest in those requirements. And. Besides supporting the other ones that have already been mentioned. And so let me get to those. And tell you what I additional changes that I would like to see having done. Number one is number four. And I understand what Jenna put here. It really spawned in my comments. But a number four, the way it's written. I want to change it by deleting that, the part that says that have received formal approval by the relevant regulatory authority. And. Uh, delete such approved. So it reads. All existing stormwater systems. Shall be deemed permissible and may remain in operation. The reason why I need to have that changed is because I can guarantee you that there is no agency. Ever approved. The drainage system that's on the building. When it was built, it was just built and all the drainage is off the roof. It goes into the street in thirty-third street, which belongs to the highway district. And by the way, that's all of the property outside the wall. And that that goes off the back goes also into ACHD's street. So I don't believe that they would be able to find, and maybe it's sort of irrelevant, but I think we need to. Eliminate that part about regulatory authorities. Um. I. I'm not exactly sure what we can do about A. Understand what the. The staff is saying, I think there are tremendous problem with problems there as ACHD pointed out. With constructability. So I'm in favor of doing what the applicant proposals on that side, which is. Pretty much leaves the sidewalk the way it is. And I. I see a lot of difficulty in in getting landscaping along that side. And that gets us to the front. Uh, the landscaping that's in the front. I'm along with doing what the applicant proposes. Uh, they they need to talk to ACHD, I mean to ITD. And uh, see what if anything that ITD would agree to them, what doing if that involves taking some of that asphalt up. And that then they could do, they should be able to do that. So. Uh, we need to put some wording in there that says that as. Negotiated between ITD and our staff. And and leave it up to the staff to sort of. Approve what they're able to negotiate with ITD. Because the asphalt, my understanding is that asphalt pathway was put on a with using federal dollars. In the nineteen seventies. It was gonna be a connecting. Pathway that went all along Chindon for bicyclists. And that was the, and that was the, that's why that asphalt piece is in there. I think it belongs to ITD. So if they'll let them. Put stuff in the middle of it, that's great. And beyond that, I I'm very much in favor of approving it.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Shepherd?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I um. I also want to echo Commissioner Wild when he said that he moved to Garden City twenty-six years ago. Was it twenty-six? Sorry, but. I moved here twenty years ago too, to to the east end, and I was really excited about the Live, Work, Create District. And so I really like your project. And I'm happy to see it. And um, I I also agree that it's a, you know, it's a very difficult. Space, and so I appreciate all of the solutions that you guys have brought forward and trying to make it work. Um. I also don't, I don't feel like I need to go through everything point by point because I agree with all of the changes that we've talked about. I love the mural. I think it's beautiful. I never really saw that before with the um. Uh, camouflage, but so that was great. And so I am in favor of approving it with all of the um. Changes or the things we talked about that um Commissioner Brown just went through line by line.
Thank you, Commissioner Shepherd. Uh, I as well appreciate the application. Thank you. I appreciate the effort to go through and um. Look at this and ahead of the situation so that it can be resolved now instead of becoming an issue in the future. And I do like the effort to do what you can with the limited site. So thank you. Um, as far as the approvals, I'm fine with the other commissioners. I don't have anything to add. Except for just if there is a motion, making sure that it's clear on prior to occupancy. Number two A, where the CT cabinet is, that it would be a mural that would be um. Hiding that equipment rather than a cabinet or some other thing that would do that. So. Any other comments from the commissioners?
Just to clarify, Mr. Chair, the mural prior to occupancies, is that the temporary? That's not the temporary, because that's gonna happen.
The mural is just gonna hide the CT cabinet.
Okay, but the, okay, the occupancy permit, the main, right?
Any other questions?
Mr. Hatch has a.
So um. Any other questions? Alright. Hearing's closed. Alright, uh, with that, we can entertain a motion.
Okay, I can give a stat of it, alright?
It's it's gonna be a long one, isn't it?
Well, I'm gonna need a bunch of help. Uh, hopefully, from probably from the staff. So. Let me make sure they even give them this guidance on that. Make sure I don't forget any part of it, alright? So, I move and and we are the deciders here. So I move that we approve. This conditional use permit. For thirty-three hundred West Timman Boulevard, Garden City, Ada County, Idaho. And uh. Let's see what the number, it would be. CUP FY twenty-twenty-five, number twelve. For the use of a dance studio at thirty-three hundred West Chindon Boulevard, Ada County. Uh, with a parcel number as noted in the agenda. Including finding the fact, inclusion of law. And the decision with the requirements as drafted by the staff. And the staff suggested decision document, option B. With. The requirements is written by them with the following changes and or additions. I think number two is probably taken care of. Uh, number two A. Uh, this is prior to occupancy, number two A. Uh, be modified, so the six hundred amp CP cabinet shall be hidden by a mural. To be. Painted. Okay? Uh, no nothing on three. Uh, that number four be amended, as I already mentioned in the discussion. So it reads, all existing stormwater systems. Shall be deemed permissible and may remain in operation. Any stormwater system found to be in a state of disrepair, deterioration or non-functionality shall be subject to mandatory reconstruction or rehabilitation. That that shouldn't be not too difficult, can be done, especially if they're re-roofing. Um. Uh, the number six is okay. That has to do with the bicycles, and I think that's consistent with what they've arranged to do. That one's taken care of. And that lets us to number eight. Based upon what I understand, uh. Let's uh leave it like it said, a five-foot wide detail. No, this will not, no, this will be deleted. Because they're gonna leave pretty much the sidewalk that's there right now. Um. Sidewalk that's along thirty-third street will be. Provided in order. And with the conditions that are. Required by Ada County Highway District. Because that's their their right of way and then, so what they can work out with Ada County Highway District will be acceptable. Uh, that's uh for number eight. Number nine. The streets gate, uh, along with Western Boulevard shall be improved to meet the requirements of I T D. And in accordance with the plan as proposed by the applicant. As modified, if necessary, by this negotiating with the staff. Right? That that will leave them to, they they can meet the staff and see what is acceptable to them. With the idea that they'll put something that in there to the extent that they can. But it won't be, it won't be specific, okay? Um, number eleven. Uh, will be the requirement for trees back there will be eliminated and there will the backside of the in lieu of the required trees, there will be a mural provided on the back of the buildings. And uh, number fifteen will be modified, so leave the eighty parking places, spaces, okay? And
You're going eighty instead of fifty nine on fifteen?
It read one fifty, we're putting eighty instead of one fifty.
Okay.
And I think that's what we said we were gonna do. Now where it says roots. I guess I'm asking the commissioners and the staff. I'm not sure about the, they're crossing a road without a designated pedestrian crossing should not be accepted. Are we, are we eliminating the roots, all of the roots that are across, going across Chinon?
I believe all the parking is now on the same side.
All the parking will be on the north side, so that doesn't have to, that that can just be eliminated.
Believe it was fifty nine.
All of those things having to do with Chinon, but I do want, I want to leave the one that later on, that's I I wanna leave it, the one on the sign. I would like for them to, as as sure as we're sitting here. There will people that will be wanting to cross there, we don't want them doing that. So let's eliminate the the stuff that's in this having to do with the crossing of Chinon, that'll be eliminated, okay? Um, thirty third street. Uh, but let's leave number G. I would like them to be required to put a sign up there. I think that there will have people there and I think that's reasonable. Put a sign up that says, look, this is not a crossing. Uh, uh, except the crossing of Chinon Boulevard is at thirty sixth street and have an arrow on it. So it tells, alerts people, makes them think a little bit. People, if they, if they try across thirty third street, somebody will get killed there, I guarantee it. And then there'll be an added one someplace in here. That they will provide parking. I don't know if we're gonna call them evens. But there will be agreements that provide a reasonable number of parking spaces for the people that are going to be working.
Do you maybe just wanna say that thirteen of the total parking will be made available at all times? By somebody or during during business hours, something like that, that work, then they're not doing thirteen more.
Yes, that that's a good suggestion. Something like that will accommodate what you were addressing at. And it would also uh, accommodate Commissioner Wild's view. Okay, I think that that takes takes care of it, unless one of you, I think of something else I didn't think of.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Brown. I know that there was some discussion on the eighty versus fifty nine parking spots. Whether or not that should be consideration for an amendment or a modification. Um, I also heard staff say, I believe that three A, the green could be removed, and then also three B, the green could be removed as potential amendment or inclusion into the motion. It's for consideration sake.
Uh, uh, that's right, number three A can go away, cause they took care of that. They're gonna put it on their own property and with the, with those uh, small buildings, they're gonna have to put the trash can then.
Commissioner Brown, just to confirm, does your motion require fifty nine parking spots or eighty fifty parking spots? I think we still have some confusion.
I thought, well, I'm a little confused, I thought decided.
I thought the last number was fifty nine.
I thought it was fifty nine too.
Okay, do we all think fifty nine? Okay, fifty nine.
Yeah, let's do fifty nine. Okay?
And and so, good motion, thank you, Kent. There was, uh, this is maybe more, I'll look down at Jenna. Uh, number one, certificate of occupancy, we talked about a temporary certificate of occupancy to maybe move this quicker. So um would the maker of the motion amend to include staff's suggestion that we allow for a temporary certificate of occupancy on number one? I I didn't hear that as part of the motion, so I'm just asking.
No, I I'm, I'm leaving that like it is. Right, so they can do that, right?
And so require a C O instead of a temporary C O.
I believe that Commissioner Brown's thinking that the statement in one, the applicant may pursue a temporary certificate of occupancy contingent upon successful fire and building inspections of the structure as number one being complete.
So Okay, I think we're good, okay?
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second, any further deliberation on this matter? Hearing none, we'll take it to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, no noes, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Break a leg.
I'd move uh, to have a recess.
Oh, is that the second? Right, so that's what you're supposed to say, okay, alright.
We will reconvene at uh nine forty.
Actually.
Ten minutes, good.
Let me think about how many years ago. Nineteen ninety three. I built a dam in my garage. Out of a wall, bottom of my garage, and I bought a stove.
Just for the
one of the little stove fireplace that goes in my, you know, it's not a stone, it's a gas fire stove. But that was a stove place of that building.
All right, so.
The backside of the. The chief.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started again. So where we left off was new business item six. I don't know what that noise is. Item B SUV FY two zero two five dash zero zero three. Shabasana urban living subdivision Ian McLaughlin with. With pivot north architecture is requesting a preliminary plat and plan unit development consisting of six. Residential lots and one common lot. The property is currently located at two one three and two one five east thirty fifth street. In the C two zoning district.
Mister Chair.
Mr. Shepherd.
Fellow members of the commission. Um, well, I don't have the direct conflict of interest in this matter because I won't receive any personal. Money or benefits from it. Um, since it is a city council election year and Hannibal has. Openly supported my campaign. I recognize that public perception could cause some concern, so I'm going to recuse myself in this vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shepherd. So. With that, we'll go ahead and open it up to the applicant. And again, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name's Ian McLaughlin. I'm with pivot north architecture. Address is one one six south sixth street. Uh, Boise Idaho. Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman and Commissioners. See if I can get that full screen. There we go. All right, I recognize we have a late night here, so I'll try and keep it brief and quick. Can everybody hear me all right? Good, all right. Um, so I guess one quick clarification. Uh, we've recently, uh, the ownership, uh, group has recently decided to change the name. It's. I'm gonna mispronounce it, Kare soul. Uh, they felt the old name was no longer, um, really supported the. The the characteristic of the development that they're going with. So we will get that remedied, uh, when we submit the final plat. All right. There we go. A quick, just one run through of locations. So we are, uh, directly adjacent to, uh, Rosa and Pushenpor. Uh, for the sake of this conversation, um, and and this hearing, I'm going to say north is the direction of the river. East is the direction of Rosa and west, uh, is the direction of thirty fifth and south is China. Just a point of clarification. Um, just kind of another aerial view of that site. Uh, currently under undeveloped, uh, so nothing on the site. Uh, some texture contextual images, um. Do you kind of looking towards that corner of Rosa? Um, adjacent overhead power, um, transformer. And I believe, uh, underground fair view acres lateral. Uh, some other views from thirty fifth and adjacent property. So, uh, what we are proposing, uh, is a, uh, six unit townhome, uh, development, uh, off of a, I know this says private drive, but it is a. Uh, common drive, um. With, uh, each unit will have two, uh, parking stalls inside the garage. And then we have, uh, three, uh, guest stalls. Access to that common drive. Adjacent that common drive is our open space, uh, which kind of located towards the back of the site. I do have a landscape plan, so we can kind of take a closer look at that. Uh, we are connecting through to car street with this, uh, pedestrian pathway. Uh, and each, uh. Each unit will have a, uh, roof deck facing towards the foothills and the river. Uh, we got a few more specific site information, square footages and setbacks if we want to speak directly about that. Uh, we are proposing approximately two thousand three hundred ninety eight square feet of open space. Uh, so that's sixteen percent, uh, which exceeds the ten percent requirement. Uh, so I guess really quickly wanted to touch on some of the goals of comprehensive plan, which we are trying to achieve. Uh, Hannah did a wonderful job in her staff report and kind of already summarized these for me, so I will keep it brief. Um, we're trying to improve, uh, city image by promoting good design, so we feel we have a. Very nice, um, kind of timeless, uh, design, um. Created distinctive neighborhood. This, uh. We are only coming to talk about this site as phase one. There could potentially be a phase two, uh, directly, uh, kind of south of us, southeast. Um, and then, uh, emphasizing the garden, garden city. So we feel that open space, um. The south side of the site, um, we've really tried to enhance that as as much as possible and connect through to car street, uh, to to provide, um, access to it. Um, we're improving the streets, uh, so both car and, uh, thirty fifth street, um. With a, uh, attached, uh. Attached sidewalk and tree wells on car street and then detached on the fifth street. Uh, while this is, uh, only one type of housing, uh, it's only townhomes. Um, we are, we do kind of view this as diversity in housing and that it is not single family housing. So it's. Of of offering other opportunities to individuals who may not be able to afford a single family home, for example. And then connecting the city, so that pedestrian pathway connected through the site. Um, and creating a place where people want to live, uh, work and recreate, so. Uh, a few of the proposed community benefits, which again, more detail as I go on, um, so we're creating compact and efficient housing. Um, in alignment with PT standards. Uh, as I mentioned before, we're enhancing those street scape and streets. Providing ample and functional open space. Improving connectivity. Uh, integrating public artwork, speak to that. Um, we'll also be in increasing, uh, the tax base to the garden city with, uh, you know, six new families hopefully. Uh, and the urban rental area that will be created, uh. Will, you know, give funds directly back to Garden City, you're right. Uh, so. Just high level touching on this again. Uh, detached sidewalk, uh, and street improvements on thirty fifth attached on our street. Um, this is that open space hatched in blue. And that kind of the thought process with locating it here was that eventually, you know, when we do a second phase for this. We're kind of connecting through to this, uh, site as well. Oh, sorry, one other thing. So, uh, ten percent required, just to touch on this would be about fourteen hundred, uh, square feet. We're providing. You know, two thousand three hundred ninety eight, that's an additional one hundred fifty two square feet. So if you were to think about like a fifteen by ten square, so it's just. Additional open space that we're providing for those residents. And then access and connectivity, um, so spoke about the pedestrian pathway, uh, adjacent Rosa. Uh, and then, um, really we're, you know, limiting. To a single curb cut, um, and what we feel is probably the best spot for it. Uh, and lastly, uh, kind of mural, uh, wall, which we've added a few more, uh, dimensional, um. Uh, specifics on this, uh, we've, uh, Hannah and speak with Hannibal and I. Um, feel that it would be helpful when we go for a CFO down the line that having dimensions associated with it just clears up confusion for everybody. Um, so previously kind of working through trash access with Republic Services. Um, this was a, uh, option that we proposed for trash access. This is. Uh, trash bins along the garage. Of, uh, each unit. Um, as the ownership group is, uh, in control of these four lots, we've proposed kind of a, a gravel access drive through. To allow the trash truck to come through and pick up. Um, we'll get into the conditions, but we are kind of still hoping to work through. And see if there are any other alternate solutions. This is the one that we're proposing at the moment, but again, we'll have the final plat will where we will hopefully nail down on this. Uh, floor plans, uh, if we want to get more in detail on specifics. So you can see each garage has a, uh, has two car garage with ample room for two ten by twenty foot spaces to meet code. Uh, second floor that includes kitchen, living, dining. Third floor with, uh, two bedrooms. And then rooftop deck. Uh, if you threw in a few views to kind of help, you know. Kind of give you visuals of what the project would look like from thirty fifteen car. Uh, so we've taken that, uh. In unit and really tried to create a different experience for the entry into that unit, uh, with. Recessed entry canopy and then additional blazing above that. So kind of trying to create a little bit different experience for that unit, so it doesn't just look like the side of a townhome. Uh, view from car street. Uh, where this guy is standing, that'd be that pedestrian pathway. Uh, and then you looking north towards the foothills. Uh, one of the feedback we did get in design review was to add some place into the garages, so progress stores, so we've done that. Uh, materiality, uh, can speak more to this if, uh, desired, but, uh, proposing. Um, stucco or stucco and or ethos at the ground floor. Um, board and button material of and then, uh, wood accents to add some warmth to the development. And then each unit will have a bolted balcony, uh, off the front. And elevations, if we wanted to speak more about those. Uh, this east elevation, so this is the one that's facing Rosa. Those are the kind of the dimensions that we have for this, uh, white, uh, stucco or ethos facade. So that, um, adds up to roughly eighty by thirty, so. And then kind of a close up of, uh, that entry can't be, uh. Condition. This is a, uh, similar project that we've done. So that what that steel kind of canopy would look like, we actually have it recessed a little bit further to give more of a stoop and more, uh. Uh, privacy slash protection from elements, so. Uh, we have civil site plans, so, uh, I I know this will come up in discussions. I'm going to try and speak. Put them, put on my civil hat unfortunate our civil engineer is not here. Uh, so we are going to collect all, uh, the rainwater off the roof and we will direct it, uh, to a catchment basin, um, and storm. That, uh, storm drain on the south side of the site. Uh, car street and thirty fifth street sections, if you want to speak more in depth about those. Uh, and landscape plan, um, so some of the feedback from designer view, um. Uh, meeting was to provide additional landscape, uh, trees to meet code on the south sides. We've done that. Uh, one point of, uh, challenge was this pedestrian pathway. So. In order to provide that pedestrian pathway, obviously we can't meet a landscape buffer and have. Uh, the pedestrian pathway unless the site was longer or potentially we had less units. So what we have tried to do as a kind of, uh. Compromise is to provide some taller, calmer trees on that side to give a little bit of a buffer while still maintaining this pathway. Um, and then also as an additional compromise, provide that our piece there, so. Um, at this point, I'm going to, uh, allow Hannibal to speak a little bit. We have some requests of revisions to the conditions of approval. And.
Wasn't sure if I need to re give my name to the record.
Yes, please, and your address.
Hannibal two fifteen east thirty fourth street. I would just like to read a couple items into the record. Uh, dear Commissioners, we appreciate staff's work on this application. However, several proposed conditions of this approval are disproportionate. Unsupported by code and create a significant. Legal and practical concerns. The most critical issue is the proposed public access easement and public access in our outdoor area. Public access easement. So our primary concern is that this is a six unit infill project. Uh, yet staff requires a dedication of a permanent public easement through private property. The project already provides sixteen percent open space exceeding the ten percent minimum. Idaho code sixty seven sixty five thirteen requires land use conditions to be proportionate to impact. And code sixty seven eight zero zero three requires a taking analysis for dedication. U S Supreme Court precedes Nolan versus California Coastal Commission and Dolan Dolan versus City of Tygar. Require require both nexus and proportionality. Neither are present here. Our actual practical concerns are the HOA would face. Liability for injury if members of the public use the easement. And residents would lose security and privacy as the public would be granted permanent access to our common open space. The HOA would bear. The maintenance burdens for un for improvements that do not mitigate this, uh, project's impact. This is not a mitigation measure. This is a public benefit imposed on a small scale private project. It risks an un unconstitutional taking and sets a dangerous precedent for small infill housing in Garden City. Our, uh, trash collection services. Uh, we will work with, uh, Republic Services. And we will, again, this is preliminary plat. By the time we return for final plat, we will have an appropriate letter. And a concluded program of our trash. Uh, we would like to use single cans in this application. We reference that an additional subdivision, both fourteen units. And an additional subdivision down and adjacent. Um, both have been approved to use single toters in the in this area. So the public art requirement, we are wanting to do wonderful public art in this space. However. The staff report requires a permanent art installation with HOA maintenance. Garden City code does not mandate art and subdivisions without a nexus to project impacts. This. Condition is unlawful exaction. For the perimeter landscape, staff acknowledges landscape conflicts with pedestrian pathways. The applicant. Has properly requested a waiver under the PUD process. Substituting art is supported by code and imposes unnecessary burdens. In conclusion, the public access easement is disproportionate. It's unsupported by law. It creates liability, security and maintenance conflicts. Coupled with the other conditions, trash, the trash easement, the public art and the landscape. This sets the requirements extended beyond the authority approved by Garden City Code and Idaho law. We respectfully request approvals for Kari soul subdivision. And with these conditions removed or modified, we ensure, uh, we will ensure that they comply with the Idaho statutes. Constitutional requirement and past Garden City precedents. What we're asking tonight is this is a preliminary application. We are going to return to you for final plat. We are asking that this commission strike. Our public access agreement and that it has never been demonstrated on any other Garden City project. For my history in working with the city. This isn't just a public access easement. This is saying our open space is required to allow the public at all times indefinitely forever. As soon as we turn this over to the HOA, they won't know what this means. They won't know how to maintain this. They won't know how to trespass people. This won't have any boundaries. So we are asking. That this commission, please strike that condition. We are also asking that you that you strike the art condition. As we will have an art plan and we will return that art plan to you by final plat. However, because there is no section of code that speaks to our art. We don't have a guideline other than saying I will return you. An art program and plan that you can approve at final plat. We are also asking that you strike the conditions of approval for Republic Service. As we will go to Republic Service, we will work with staff on an appropriate plan. We will return that plan to you at the time of final plat. We would like to use single cans. And conversations with Republic Service have said, this is a. Fine request for a six unit townhouse. I appreciate your time. And again, I have never seen this condition be imposed in any development in my history time working in Garden City. Thank you so much.
And with that, I'll stand for questions or there's any questions for Hannah.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant?
Chair.
Mr. Smith.
Very quick question. I'm sorry, I was confused about the mural. I thought that your. Documents showed a mural, but now we're opposing the mural. So is is the mural in or is the mural out? Just, uh, from your perspective, I think. Do you do you want the mural or you don't want?
We do want to do an art program that you approve, and so we're happy to keep art. However. Art is currently not in code, and so as we move through this actual project. We'd like to make sure that our team, since art is not called out in your code. We'd like to have the control over the art. And so even right now, we're thinking about a live, living wall. And a variety of different really unique features. So we're going to return that program to you. However, at this current state, we don't want to be mandated because it's not in code. We want to say. Please trust the applicant and we will present you a plan that you can be supportive of because it will be quality in nature. We're asking that you strike that condition. But we will return you, yes.
So you would prefer to keep the perimeter. So you would prefer to keep the perimeter landscaping requirement along Lot Seven rather than an alternative for art? You'd rather be required at the landscaping?
We're fine with the perimeter landscape and.
Yeah, sorry, when you're referring to Lot Seven, you mean that.
Yes, I'm referring to the Lot Seven where it was a as an alternative to the required perimeter landscaping. There was an option for for a mural. Is that the same spot we're talking about? Or is that a is there a different mural?
Yeah, so I'm sure Hannah will speak to some of this, but there are. As with PUD process, there are things that are proposed as compromises, right? And so what's being proposed is art, public easement, a number of things that we're not necessarily comfortable with. So we're already providing a pathway and art, I guess is what we're saying.
But in that Lot Seven, you're saying, given the alternative between perimeter landscaping and some art thing, you'd rather go with the some art thing. Is that correct? I want to make sure I'm understanding your position correctly.
I would say we're fine with art. We know we're going to do art. We're happy to make this condition an agreement now. If we could say mural or otherwise green wall.
Similar.
Decided and designed by the applicant.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your clarification.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Ms. Beal.
Good evening Commissioners. And I guess I'll just dive right into it. We were previously just talking about PUDs and artwork and requested waivers to code adjustments. So essentially, how we have gotten to this point is that the application as proposed went to the design review consultants. And during that discussion, there there was no conversation about the public access easement at that point in time. As like a a game to the community as part of this PUD. And so the designer view consultants thought that the artwork might help the proposal meet the PUD standards and objectives as part of like that give and take mechanism. But they also or the designer view consultants also recommended having a landscape easement on the adjacent property, which is pushing for and Rosa. For that extra perimeter landscaping requirement that this proposal is currently pushing in. So after that meeting, I I looked at the application more and kind of tweaked some of the requirements. Taking the intent of what the conversation was at the design review consultation meeting and applying it in a different way to where we're now discussing this public access easement. So instead of imposing an easement on an adjacent property that is not owned by the current property owner for this proposed development, I kind of flip flopped it as a recommendation for a public access easement along that Lot Seven to help further meet the PUD requirements and not require a separate property owner to put in landscaping for this proposal. So that's where the public access easement proposal came from is is essentially from staff. And I've had a meeting with Ian and Hannah regarding what my motivations were, recommendations were for that public access easement. Of course, we're dealing with the surplus of common open space. So that could be an alternative to that justification for the code reductions. But we're essentially dealing with three code waivers. The first being the common drive, which is a common one that we see. They're proposing six units off of that common drive when only four are allowed. So it's more dense than what the common drive is allowing in code. The other one is the setbacks. So it's the property is Zone C two. And in the C two zoning district, it doesn't allow for common lot lines to have a zero foot setback. All lot lines have a five foot setback. So the proposed residential townhomes would not be permitted because they're all encroaching within that five foot setback. And then the third waiver being for the perimeter landscaping. So the code requires a ten foot perimeter landscaping. We have allowed for five feet of perimeter landscaping, assuming that adjacent property owners have landscaping that can count towards that buffer or if the adjacent property can be redeveloped and then later provide that five feet. In this space, the proposed perimeter landscaping along the eastern property boundary line, which is where it's required, is ranging from about five feet to zero feet in some spaces. And so definitely not meeting what code requires. But those are essentially the only three code compliance issues. So overall, it's a very code compliant application. We just have to figure out how the reduction requests can be permitted and through the PUD mechanism, we can allow those waivers, but the proposal has to meet the intent of the PUD findings and objectives. So throughout the staff report, I mentioned different objectives and how the public access easement could further help this proposal, help it fit better within the community, not only just for helping the connectivity, but also with the requirement of the artwork. It kind of is cohesive with adjacent parcels like Casino Beach. Where they have like their their public access easement through their pedestrian plaza area, which is intended to be an art walk. At least that's what it was approved as. And they do currently have artwork within that Casino Beach subdivision. So and I can speak further to what objectives the public access easement would help cater towards as well as sections of code. The staff report mentions the common open space intent. And yes, while the common open space is not excessive, it's great. There's a lot of common open space. It's it's not necessarily the common open space that is an issue. It's the perimeter landscaping and the the reductions to the setbacks for those townhomes that is in question. And just some notes here, we we don't currently have a comment, an agency comment from ACHD. I have reached out to them and there have been some discussions, but we don't have an official comment. And one of my concerns is the street scape. The street scape along Thirty Fifth Street, so here on the left hand side. The plans indicate that it's a six foot wide landscape buffer, which is consistent with a previously adopted street scape plan, that which is now outdated. ACHD's new policy for landscape buffers is instead of six feet, it's eight feet. So this street scape might require two foot tweak. Which isn't that big of a deal, but it might impact the the end unit here on Lot One a little bit depending. But that's not too big of a concern, especially because this is a preliminary plat. That can all be adjusted at the final plat process later and which city council will take a look at it and see if it changes too much of the application. In which case, if it does, then you guys would be seeing this again. Another concern that I have for ACHD to comment on is the act the trash easement and access over on Thirty Fourth Street. And so right now, if a trash truck were to go on the adjacent property that is to be phased to potentially. Right now, it's just going, right now, it's a vacant piece of property and there isn't even a driveway through it. But part of this proposal is to have some kind of driveway over there to Thirty Fourth Street, but I don't know if that will end up I'll say triggering improvements along Thirty Fourth Street from ACHD. But that is a question out there at the moment. And I think I think that's essentially it. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Any questions for Hannah? I do have a question for you. So on the perimeter landscaping on this plan, can you show me really where the issues are?
Yeah. So this is what I've been saying is the eastern property boundary line. It's kind of more like the southeastern. This whole property line is required to have perimeter landscaping because code needs it for a residential property adjacent to a commercial. And when I say that it ranges from zero to five feet in width, it's because the pedestrian pathway is literally along that boundary line. But then the landscaping just gets a little bit wider up to five feet, I believe, here along the car street scape sidewalk. There is an irrigation. Fairview Acres irrigation like box here. That will be within that landscape strip, but that's that's not an issue.
So really just that southeast high shape wedge?
Yes, yeah. And then in my review, like this is going to end up being a connection and it is proposed to be that drive through for trash. So I didn't require any perimeter landscaping there for access reasons.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wild.
So Ms. Ball mentioned that she was unaware of any other public access easements, but there's one across the street. Is that what you said?
Yes, so there is a public access easement across car towards the river at Casino Beach.
Okay, and was that part of the application that the developer wanted to provide an art walk, public access easement, or was that a condition of the city's approvals?
Yes. So Casino Beach subdivision was a much more intense subdivision than what this one is. There was a lot of code compliance issues and substitute.
I remember some of them.
Waivers. And part of that subdivision was a request to have like a farmer's market or art walk all within it. And part of that area is their like art walk plaza alleyway between what is the commercial and like apartments or condos in their townhomes. So while it wasn't really specifically required, at least as far as I can recall, I mean, this was twenty twenty one. It was part of the overall development and it was a PUD. And so there was a lot of you know, discussions and negotiations going on within that development to get.
It was more like a dedication by the property owner in negotiation with the approvals. Makes more sense. Okay. My only other question is I've been doing this a while. I've never seen a temporary gravel driveway for trash through a vacant lot next door. Is is it, and maybe I can ask on rebuttal the same question, but is that? I guess that makes sense only if it's phasing because otherwise we would require a different like a different configuration. So I I not not understanding why we would ever allow a gravel lot through a vacant a gravel driveway through a vacant lot to meet that requirement. Because otherwise, there would be a hammerhead and there would be a required turnaround. But obviously, we have a phasing plan. Is that the?
Mr. Wild, so we I have been told that there is a phase two. I have not seen phase two. Part of this approval is not requiring a phase two. That's not really something that we can do, I don't think. But to speak about the turnaround, yes. If not for the phase two potential, then we would require a trash turnaround. And.
So that same drive driveway would be used for fire truck and ambulance? They would all access through that same. So that is a.
Yeah, I also I also think that the fire access can be taken off of the public streets in this scenario. They've got two streets. They're like a corner.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Beal? All right, hearing none. Thank you very much. We'll open it up for the public testimony. Do we have any? Any comments, anything that we need to consider that was prepared?
Chairman, there was no one signed up.
All right, thank you. Anybody in the audience that would like to testify on this matter? All right, seeing none, then we'll turn it back over to the applicant.
I'll take a stab at answering some of the questions. So just to speak to fire and emergency vehicle access, that would be off Car Street and Thirty Fifth Street. We would not have the same condition as the previous project that was proposed earlier tonight. We can get that fire apparatus access from Car Street. So that private or sorry, common drive is purely for residential resident use. To give some context to the trash access conversation, Republic Services was fully in favor of trash access off Car Street. We are aware that the city is not. So that was how we have come to this pass through of an adjacent lot. It's not ideal for us either. So if there's some way we can work with the city to come up with an alternate solution, as Hannah Ball had mentioned, there are other subdivisions that have access off of the street. So to the landscape buffer, I did want to point out. So the the code does require it for residential adjacent to commercial uses. There's three points. I'm not going to read it out loud, but it says basically it needs to be ten feet deep. The screen needs to be six feet wide and six feet tall at its maturity. And at least one tree shall be planted every fifteen feet. So with those columnar trees, we're meeting that every fifteen feet of building. They're going to be six feet high at their maturity. They might be six feet wide and it's obviously not ten feet deep. So we're meeting fifty percent of the requirements. But just want to point that out.
And then I just wanted to bring up a couple of points. We do believe that that public access provides unprecedented burden to six units. And we believe it sets an unrealistic standard for small infill development. The waivers in general can be a little bit of a moving target. We try to design everything to fit code as best as possible. We like to come to you with a project that we can say very minimal requests of your consideration are required. We do our research and we 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 know our market. We know the community very well and essentially the waiver to the zero setback is not real because all townhouses require a zero setback. By definition, that's what a townhouse is. So the waivers are sort of an awkward moving target. We're asking you for one, essentially. The one waiver we're asking you is the landscape buffer. And we did, as Ian mentioned, we accomplished most. And we did, as Ian mentioned, we accomplished most of the goals with the landscape buffer. Um, we believe that the landscape waiver is weighted to really put a lot of burden on this application. This is misuse leverage. In my opinion, as the staff report is, is noted, uh, demanding public access. And instead of allowing us to use what the P U D code allows for a simple request is, uh, very disproportionate to a small infill development. And again, we do, we are gonna be drafting C C N Rs on this subdivision. We will speak to how trash operates. Uh, the amount of time that the cans can be on car street, how they need to be stored, how they need to be cleaned, how they need to be maintained. These are all things that we spend extensive amount of time making sure that this community stays in prestigious condition and looks and functions very well in an urban environment. So I'm asking you for one condition of approval and I'm asking you to strike those other conditions as they propose a undue burden to a six townhouse project. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Brown?
Mr. Chairman, I do, I, it's prompting, uh, doesn't, either one. I want to be clear on, on what we're requesting. If, Chairman, if I understand what we're saying then, if, if we don't require, you don't have the connection to thirty fourth street. I understand Mr. Wild's concern and also what is stated about, if I understand it. There is planned to be another follow-on development that at some point if it goes forward, but there's no guarantee that's gonna happen. So if we adopt what you're proposing, Ms. Ball has, has proposed, the trash cans, and you're gonna be requesting through Republic that each one of the places, instead of having normal, like where I live, they have two, some people have three. You're gonna be requesting one for each one, but they will be picked up on car street. Correct? So on the trash day, those carts, they will be taken around, assuming that they'll be in the garage. So they're gonna be taking them around and put them on the curb. Is that correct?
Uh, I think that would be our preference, yes, but, um, obviously we need to work through that with the city and our public services, so.
So, well then let me pursue that. In the event that they don't approve that, then what's the alternative in the short term? Ultimately, if, if the development goes and that, then you can go back to perhaps having them picked off of that, of that side, right?
Yeah, so to, um, I guess just to play.
So we're talking about what happens in the short term?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, uh, to, to play off what, what you're saying, uh, to make sure I'm understanding correctly. If we are not able to come to an agreement where trash was able to be picked up off car street, then we're back to where we are currently, showing this cross-access through an adjacent lock. As you saw from the previous, uh, application tonight, that hammerhead takes up a substantial portion of the site. And so we're trying to come up with a creative solution as an alternative to that, that vast paved area that nobody can use effectively. So, all right, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Wild?
Thank you. So tell me about the gravel drive. Who owns the property? Do you have an easement? Can we be assured that, uh, access through that empty lot won't be revoked in a year? Is it your lot?
Yes, sir. I'm an owner's rep on this file. Um, so we, we have had conversations with Republic Service. Republic Service is gonna support single toters picking up on, on car street. So we're, we're optimistic, that's the plan. They're going to approve that. If staff likes that solution, that's what we would prefer. So we're, we're optimistic, that's the plan. Um, we can even say units one and two could use thirty fifth street. Units three through six could use North Car. So we could do a creative division. Again, we will bring back a letter of support from Republic Services. That's, I think that is the solution, to be honest. I don't, I don't think that the, for this project, I don't think the commercial trash capacity works. I really don't. I want this project to be able to stand alone and perform as designed.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it. We will now close the public hearing. This matters now before the commission. We are recommending body for this land unit development. So with that, we can open up for discussion. Commissioner Brown?
Okay, I, I like this development and what they're trying to do. And, uh, uh, my intent is to recommend approval. And there are a couple of issues that we apparently have to figure out. So my thoughts on these requests for these waivers and actually, I'm interested to see what the attorneys on the board are gonna say. I guess with regard to the public access easement, my inclination is to listen to what the attorneys had to say, but I would say that it sort of makes sense to me that we would, we would approve what they're asking. Um, the trash service, I think we should delete the requirement, that being a requirement. And let that, because we have other developments that are more townhouses than in this, than six of them. Where we've gone along with them, having curbside pickup of the nearby street. And so their current plan, and maybe in the future that will be altered depending on what happens with that, the other second parcel and how it's connected. But for the time being, I think we should go along with what they suggest is the plan and, and let them work that out with Republic. The public art requirement, uh, I think we should, uh, work out of the requirement there instead of making that a requirement. Uh, less to, to do what Ms. Ball suggested, that the artwork that they have associated with this will be provided in accordance with a future plan provided by the applicant. In other words, she suggested maybe a green wall or something else. Uh, don't very, don't be specific in what we say there. And I think we should approve their requests about perimeter landscaping. Uh, I think that in looking at the plan, I think that they have, uh, sufficient landscaping and that landscaping narrowing down on park on the, I guess it would, on the way pictured there, on the southeast side, that will be fine. So I would, I would go along with that request with regard to that. And the other, the others still existing waivers, we would, we would grant them.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Wild?
I, I mean, there's a lot of lawyers on this panel. Um, yeah.
Means we have even more opinions.
Yeah, I, um, I'm not interested in, uh, requiring public access easement. I don't think that's, um, I, I'm not gonna talk about takings analysis or Nolan and Dolan and, uh, I'll let Mr. Smith do that, but.
Not a chance.
Uh, I, I don't think it's necessary. I don't think, uh, it's frankly that much of a, uh, public benefit to require a small um, space like that. I don't think it would get used by the public even if we did require it and, and agreed to that. So, uh, I think it's different than a prior project. The reason I use the word dedication is that is something that developers do. They dedicate portions of their project to the public, whether it's a park or dedicate uh, a vacant lot to build an elementary school or, or whatever it is. That's not what this is. That is what, uh, Casino Beach was, if I'm remembering it right. So, um, I agree, uh, the no public access easement, uh, requirement and, uh, no, no, uh, no required public art. But again, I think there, we've gotta come to some consensus on what landscaping slash public art is going to be required to meet that, um, requirement.
Thank you, Commissioner Wild. Commissioner Smith?
I agree, uh, with everything that I said. I am not going to go into Nolan and Dolan. No one wants to hear that. Um, I agree, I don't think a public access, uh, is necessary. I understand why it was a suggestion in the staff report given the adjacent property and had that been, been something that this developer was interested in. I think that could have been a fun combined project. But since they're not, um, I, I certainly don't think it's something that we, we should require. Um, so I, I agree that that should not be part of this. Um, I think the perimeter landscaping and the mural art living wall thing kind of cancel each other out in exchange for a reduction in the perimeter landscaping. The applicant can do something lovely. It sounds like they already have a plan. I think we can be somewhat vague in what we're acquiring, say something along the lines of in lieu of the landscaping that would be there, some form of art, living wall, um, decorative feature that's attractive to the building. You know, something along those lines that gives a lot of flexibility to the applicant and what they wanna do. Um, I also agree on the trash. I don't have strong feelings. If it works for Republic, it, I think that is, that is fine. So we would just need something demonstrating that that is the case. Um, I think, I think that is everything. Um, if A C H D wants to show up with an opinion at some point about buffers, I suppose they can. But I don't think that's something that we necessarily have to, have to do anything with, um, since they haven't showed up to say anything yet.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Really don't have much to add. I, I do like the project. I like the renderings. I think it looks really nice. You guys have done a great job with it. I would echo essentially everything that the commissioners have said regarding trash collection and figuring that out with Republic. Uh, as well as the public easement, not the necessity to have it. As far as the perimeter landscaping, I could see where Commissioner Smith is saying the, the give and take on that. So whatever staff and applicant would work out for some sort of installation that it sounds like they're already working on with the living wall, something like that. So nothing really to add at this point, so. Any other discussion, commissioners? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move, Mr. Chair, that we approve or recommend approval of S U B F Y twenty twenty five zero 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 three. Of Asana Urban Living Subdivision, um, with the following adjustments that the, um, the requirement of the mural wall or art, um, installation will be modified to require just some sort of landscape replacement along the, um, somebody give me a direction.
Eastern.
East, thank you. Along the eastern side, um, in the form of a living wall or mural that's acceptable to staff and the applicant, and we would encourage flexibility on, on that front. Um, that the requirement for the trash collection is also amended to allow for collection of trash on North Car Street if acceptable and approved by Republic. Um, if not, then the required, the alternative requirement stand. Um, and the applicant would have to find some other way to allow for trash access. And then finally that we eliminate the public access requirement. Didn't miss anything?
Well, second to mention.
I have a motion and a second. Any further deliberation on this matter? Uh, hearing none, we'll take it to vote. All those in favor say aye, aye, he knows, no knows. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right, the next item is new business, item C. And on this item, due to an abundance of caution, due to a conflict and being that the nature, the rezone is limited to certain areas, I will be recusing myself as compared to having the rezone applied to the entire city. So with that, I'll be recusing myself from this portion of the agenda and turning it over to the Vice Chair, Commissioner Brown.
Mr. Chair, I have a similar motion. Uh, my address is located in the rezone area. And while, um, just for the record, I generally do not believe that commissioners have to recuse themselves for general rezones because it is in our legislative function as opposed to our quasi, quasi judicial function. And if we all had to recuse ourselves for every rezone for the whole city, you wouldn't have any commissioners. But given that this rezone is applicable to only a select parts of the city and that, um, my address and the, and, um, the, the chair's concerns as well fall within those limited zones in an abundance of caution, I also believe I should recuse myself. So you're down to three.
Great. Okay, so the first thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna call for a ten-minute recess before we start this. And I'm gonna move over here and go outside for four minutes. So see you guys next month.
What do you know about recreational immunity?
Recreational immunity?
With that, I'm, I'm just curious if that would have qualified.
If, if what? If recreational immunity is, is full?
No, well, it was.
Yes, if you have a judge. The state of Idaho is covering. But that's why it's on appeal. Judge screwed it up.
Cause I've said that I agree with the discussion.
Yeah, these air conditioners are working. There's plenty of kids.
There's like a couple of things like that.
Okay, are we still, are we good to go down there? How about the rest of the citizens? If we're all ready to go, we might get to go. I'm gonna put these things on, makes me so I can hear better. Unfortunately. In nineteen sixty nine in Vietnam, I lost portion of my hearing. So. I'm gonna readjourn. And we are now going to consider the rezoning. Art which is. All right, six C. Doning. Rezoning F Y twenty twenty five number one. And it's a little different. A rezoning application is a little bit different than what we're normally hearing. So I have lots of instructions here. I'm gonna make sure I read them. So that we have, everybody knows what the rules are gonna be and I haven't left anything out this authority. Next item on the agenda is zone. Z O N F Y, that really should be rezoned. F Y twenty twenty five number one. The format for the public hearing, and this is a public hearing. Will follow the following procedure for each of this application. As opposed to an applicant, the city staff. Which is the applicant will give the initial report. That would be followed by the public hearing portion. At which point that will be followed by rebuttal testimony from the staff. And after that, I will close the hearing. Discussion of hearing among hearing commissioner members will follow. And a motion to approve, deny, or continue in the application will follow. Any further discussion among hearing commission members. Will follow after that and that will be followed by some kind of a decision hopefully. Before we begin, please be advised, there is a pending application concerning the Boise Bible College property, which is in the area. While discussion of a rezone may proceed. For legal reasons, the planning and zoning commission cannot hear or consider matters related to that specific application. During this hearing. Those that are interested in that appropriate time, there'll be a hearing on that one will be separate. We respectfully ask that you refrain from discussing any aspect of the pending application. If it is brought up during testimony, the chair will be obligated to interrupt and stop the testimony having to do with it. To maintain compliance with legal requirements. Thank you for understanding this ahead of time. Now, if you wish to give public testimony, there are some general rules to abide by. First of all, sign up. And I'm assuming that everybody that's here. Wants to. Speak to this. Here. And. I will ask a quick question in a minute. Only speak when recognized by the chairperson to do so. Clearly state your name and address into the microphone at the podium. Address the commission, not the public. Applicant or staff. If you have a question, you can ask it, but we cannot stop to answer it at that time. Most likely. The staff may be able to address it during their rebuttal, so if you have a question. Then Jenna will have to make a decision about whether or not it can be addressed while we're at this meeting. Or we may be able to answer during our discussions. In our case, that would be. The commissioners would be if that is brought up by them. But at that point, there won't be interaction between the audience and the commission. All testimony at public hearing will be limited to three minutes. Except for a spokesperson who is granted fifteen minutes. Is there anybody indicated there will be a spokesperson?
And Vice Chair Brown, yes, Ms. Wendy Herbert is signed up to be a spokesperson.
So hers is in here, right?
It is.
In order to, this is a warning, I'm going to allow her to go first. Because my experience, which is considerable on this board, it will make it go faster if she goes first. Better than having individual other individuals. And she will be, she'll be granted fifteen minutes. Be courteous. If your testimony is repetitious, you may indicate that you agree with the previous testimony rather than restating. Something that's already been said. And that applies to what. The representative is saying also. You know, if you want to support what she said, and I'm assuming there will be people who want to do that. Just say so, but don't report. Go back over something that she already presented. Once the public portion of the hearing is closed, the commission cannot receive any more testimony. This includes any type of comment or question. That being said. We'll go back and we'll start at the top and that will be the city staff report.
I thank you, Acting Chair and members of the commission again. I will just give a brief overview of where this application started from. The city's been in the process, as you well know, as you've worked on. This code revisions for about two years and we're about halfway through. During what we've referred to as the quote unquote buffer ordinance. There was some discussion about the differences between how the R three zoning district interacts. In east of Glenwood versus west of Glenwood. Where east of Glenwood, the desire is to support higher density mixed use. Redevelopment potentially, that's as we see tonight, the direction of the redevelopment. In that side of town, whereas the west of Glenwood. We've heard a desire to preserve low and medium density residential. Character and our comprehensive plan supports that. A solution that this commission actually did not recommend. But when the legislation went to city council that. Came about was a little bit different than what we talked about here. I don't remember the exact face at that point in time, but they switched to create a medium density district. An R N zoning district. And that combines really the R two form standard with just an added height allowance of ten feet. And capped the density at fifteen units per acre, which is right in between the R two and the R three. Allowed densities. And used what at that point in time, the R three allowable uses. Basically on the books, but city council wanted to be. Cautious in that the R three uses opened up. To allow for more uses and so they told staff to initiate immediately a rezoning. Of the area. West of Glenwood, the residential areas. As were discussed during those discussions to align with the comprehensive plan. As a first phase of targeted implementation of. As we worked through the process of making. Presumably the code match. The comp plan a little bit better. Again, really, there were some discussions, they're largely centered south of the river. And west of Glenwood, but also some acknowledgement of some. Some of the same issues north of the river. And so this application again really only looks at residential zones and west of the. West of Glenwood and in. In looking at this as just another step forward, staff also noted that. Zoning could be simplified if the. R twenty designation could be eliminated. There are only fourteen properties in the city that are designated as R twenty. And making, in preparing the application. Some key considerations, two big ones that are. Well, the three, three big ones are. Legally required to align any zoning with the comprehensive plan. And then the second thing in looking at rezoning properties is that legal spot zoning. It is illegal and that is. In Idaho, what we call type two. Spot zoning, which means that it's not in alignment with the comp plan. And also inconsistent with adjacent properties or districts. And then avoiding legal conflicts. In retrospect, staff wouldn't have looked at it this way, but the application moved forward. Making a hole for properties that had legal nonconforming uses or current applications on them. And then again, as already noted, simplifying zoning. This is just a map of the comprehensive plan. The light green is low density residential, the orange. Is residential medium density and then the circles. Are activity notes and those are the comprehensive plans. Designations and the Green Boulevard for it or is another comprehensive plan. That designation that was taken into consideration. Staff wants to mention that there is a tool that can be applied through rezones. And that's development agreements. A development agreement. Can limit or define conditions within certain properties. If it's tied to the zoning. And. The use of the development agreement can ensure that zoning be equitable and preserve existing legal uses. While they can offer flexibility, they shouldn't be used to circumvent the comprehensive plan's goals or result in spot zoning. And so there could be a sunset clause in that. For example, when that particular use is no longer there, then that use would go away in the development agreement. The areas that were included in the river, I'll go into a little bit more depth here in a minute, but this is just a zoomed in map. And the area is proposed to rezone from R three to R two. Our north, the areas north of the river, except for the areas proposed to go from R twenty to C two. As well as there is north of Marigold in area. And that is a down zone and the reason that staff proposed that was to align those R three. Parcels that are in the low density designation of the comprehensive plan as low density designation. And again, that. There are some holes that. I don't think I, I wanted to say as I started this presentation and I will do this now. There have been community members that have been interactive and made a lot of comments and taken time. And they've really pointed out. How to make this better and so staff does thank the community for your time and your comments. And dedication to help this be the best that it can be. And some things were pointed out to staff after the application went out. The first of which is this property right here. Which is sixty eight hundred North Horseshoe Bend Road is actually in a T O D node designation of the comprehensive plan. For that reason, staff would not recommend that that be down zoned. And then just because of the discussions really focused in on this neighborhood. And then this neighborhood was also brought up during the ordinance discussions. Staff just got blinders on and it was noted to staff that this area here really also could be. Rezone to low density as that would match with the comprehensive plan as well. And finally, trying to avoid some of those legalities. Staff didn't propose the Strawberry Glen Apartments because it would create immediate. Immediately create a nonconforming use. However, staff believes that that is an oversight. And really that potentially could be addressed either with rezoning that to be the adjacent. Where it's touching and it's kind of outside of a node and it could be more of that mixed juice that's adjacent. And I think that would be legitimate or to R two with a development agreement to allow for that. Apartment. Property to exist as is, and I think that would be a much leaner application and not result in a potential. Spot zoning claim. And the areas that were proposed to go from R three to R N. Are the areas that are designated in the comprehensive plans. Residential medium density and so. Right here, these are all properties that are R three. And then there's some properties that are R three right here that were not recommended by staff. For the rezone and the reason for that is because these properties here are the properties that are in one of the destination nodes. And so staff feels that that R three designation is pretty spot on. Staff has been asked, well, why not R M there as well? And I think the biggest reason for that is if there's any sort of mix of a use. That R M designation is going to be difficult for individuals to utilize. Maybe have a barber shop or whatever they might be able to propose, a coffee shop, et cetera. Don't put me on that one. I'd have to look at the table of uses. But we, since those uses follow what R three has traditionally been, we've seen other. Areas struggle was trying to have that mix of use. Coke Stone across town off of Adams is a good example where they were petitioning the city to add additional uses into. The R three district. And then kind of the elephant in the room, again, we're not going to talk about particulars of the proposal. Uh, eighty six ninety five West Marigold, but there is a pending application. Staff did not propose that. It'd be because staff felt if. If it were to be rezoned, there could be legal issues um, and discussions with the city attorney, he felt that that. Uh, he agreed with that analysis. For both ways, um, if you added development agreement saying that that future use. Is allowed, that's a tad amount approval of the use before it's gone through the appropriate due process. And but if you preclude it and then you're, you're adding uh, an existing non-conformity. Immediately and so until that goes through the due process, it's, it's kind of tricky. However, I've sat and thought about this a lot. And, and we need, would need uh, legal guidance if a development agreement could potentially address both issues. Saying there is a rezone, uh, however. If it's, if that application's not approved, then it would just be RM. If it is approved, then it, it would be allowed as an existing non-conforming. Without having to go through some of the, the steps that we make existing non-conforming uses go through. Addressing that R twenty, there are two spots. That are south of the river and that staff has proposed uh, to go to R three. Both of those spots are in nodes and so staff would suggest that that's an appropriate uh, zoning designation. And then there is a, there are two properties um, adjacent to Chenden. Uh, that are zoned R twenty, um, and staff is suggesting that that go to C two. The C one designation. For the comp plan, I would say in code would be ideal, but uh, because of the surrounding uses and trying not to create that. Spot zoning issue and just. Change those two properties. Uh, staff has suggested that C two would be a better designation. Um, and aligns pretty well with the comprehensive plan, uh, there's no inconsistencies that are glaring. One of the properties contains a church, which is a conditional use in all zoning districts. And the other uh, is a multifamily development, which is permitted use in C two. And then. What has not been. Uh, what there has been the most public comment about is. That area that is residentially residential medium density in the comp plan also contains R two. So low density. Zoning currently. And staff for consistency and to avoid unequal application and spot zoning. Has recommended that that also be rezoned to RM, so the whole area. That's uh, designated as residential medium density would then be zoned to residential medium density. Um, it is an up zone. Aside from. Potentially this um, R twenty top C two, it's the only. Uh, proposed up zone. And that would go from six units per acre to fifteen. And there would be an additional height allowance as well as. A slight expansion and allowable and conditionally allowed the uses. And then community feedback. Through public comment and the neighborhood uh, meeting. Staff has summarized hopefully. All of the community's feedback in, in general summary uh, format. Um, and that is in the staff report, but uh, there are a couple of matters that staff. Would like to specifically point out uh, for those. Uh, that are in the, the audience and that's um, comprehensive plan validity. Zoning changes must align with the comprehensive plan or first change the concert comprehensive plan. Um, and, and uh, staff believes that the comprehensive plan has been legally. And is legally adopted and valid and. A second issue. That came up. And I do see. And location. Um, and then infrastructure capacity, uh, there are kinds, there are two infrastructure. Capacity concerns that staff uh, believes are very valid. The first of which is Marigold Street, uh, Marigold uh, can very much be used as. What is the word, instead of going a cut through, thank you, from Chenden and. And so. We, we see at peak hours an awful lot of use of Marigold then for. People that are traveling through Garden City um, versus within Garden City. And ACHD has scheduled this for review in twenty twenty six. And so ACHD is hearing us and, and this, it has been a priority for the city to have that looked at. And um. Then sewer limitations, uh, we are aware as a city uh, that there are some capacity issues. And that's undergoing current evaluation. And then the big area of comment overwhelmingly has been. People concerned about the up zone of Willowbrook. Uh, the Willowbrook Estate uh, communities and I include there's another small subdivision when I say that. That is not technically a part of the Willowbrook. Communities. Uh, but I really do want to share. Uh, the reason staff's not trying to force something down the community's throat. Uh, but if, if there is to be a rezone of the area, staff really believes. That legally it needs to be uh, holistic and not picking out certain properties. Where there's an unequal application. Through some research, it looks like. A lower zone down zoning can be considered spot zoning. And uh, the Idaho courts really have, um, there's precedents where. Not only does, does the law say you have to align your rezoning with the comprehensive plan, but that's been adjudicated. And in looking at the Willowbrook Estate subdivision, they're already built out. And so that's been one of the big comments, why would you rezone something that's already built out? Well, that's for consistency and so the city doesn't get sued uh, from the staff's point of view. And, and, and really looking at the Willowbrook Estates. There may, the, the. An RN may be. Uh, more reflective of what's actually going on in the ground at the Willowbrook Estates. Where if you take everything and you look at it as a whole. Uh, there's a lower density, but some of the lots are more akin to about eight units per acre, which would exceed that R two density or it does. And staff was not able to find that there are restrictions on the bigger lots that exist. And so if those came to the city. Outside of what the CCNRs would say, there's still the ability for those. To, to be subdivided and the city would have to do that if it's. Legal. And, and they meet uh, the requirement, is it likely? Probably not, because those are controlled. Uh, through the Willowbrook Estates, but uh, the city would be required to apply that. If that type of application did come to us. And in the R two, there may be. We've heard comments that we don't want things like artist studios. Or a parking areas, uh, but that may be already existing and so those would become non-conforming. Immediately and the city would. If it came to the city's attention, have to go and ap- apply. The code that's in place and so the community would have less. Flexibility to regulate that, say somebody needed to work from home and it didn't quite fit. The, the R two, but you could fit it into the um, RM. Or there's a parking area that is part of the Willowbrook Estates. Uh, community, it's legal, it was on the initial plans that went through for. Uh, approval, but that would become. Uh, something that is a precluded use within the new era with, or it is a precluded, excuse me, it's a legal non-conforming use. In the R two zoning district. And so where uh, staff is not uh, trying to discount. Uh, any of the, the comments that were received by the city. Uh, staff is trying to offer that there may be some. Flexibility for the community that the community may end up finding is the. Advantages. Um, again, it's a built out community and the likelihood. That through the R two or the RM uh, zones, either way. That you would see much of any development happen. Is, is pretty slim. Not only would you have to meet. The, the purchase and have a lot where you think you could divide it out. There are an awful lot of other zoning constraints, as everybody in this room heard tonight through different applications. And so you have those buffers and landscaping requirements. And, and to find a, a lot that would work. Not im- impossible, but not very likely. And so a rezone. Uh, in many ways, just really want to affect. Uh, the, the property and there are already CCNRs in place that staff has reviewed. That the community has a thirty five foot height restriction and limits their uses within their subdivision to residential. And there, there have been comments received on that too, that they, that the community. And the homeowners association in particular has indicated they don't want that burden of enforcement to shift to them. Another tool, that development agreement tool. Um, is out there of where it could, there could be a rezone. To RM with a development agreement with time limitations and limiting. The height, et cetera, um, not time limitations, excuse me, with limiting the height that they uses. Again, then the city would be forced to enforce those. Um, and this, and the homeowners association wouldn't have the flexibility. Uh, but. Uh, staff would suggest that that might be very difficult to administrate administratively execute. Where you have a number of properties versus just one property. In the, the other examples that I discussed on the other properties that may have one ownership with one. Multifamily unit. And so there, there. That is. It would be difficult, I think. So staff's recommended action tonight. To you includes removing that sixty eight hundred North short Horseshoe Bend Road from the R three to the R two. Uh, rezone. To proceed very cautiously. If, if. A development agreement is recommended for the R two to RM uh, proposed rezonings. Due to that administrative complexity, complexity. Uh, however. Uh, staff is recommending uh, to avoid spot zoning and. For equal administration, that that area be rezoned to RM. And then finally, staff is recommending to, to, that you could recommend to city council to delay. Approval of this application until um, some of those other items. That were discussed that could be brought in and have those as a, a full rezone altogether. Um, and the reason that staff is saying that is. Just the, the same reason to avoid spot zoning, to avoid perception. Uh, of um, mal- malice by the city, um, and just take to, to take everything together all at once. There is the flip side of that though, is that R three zoning designation, um, the uses have already changed. And so I, I know that there is some concern. Um, that if there is an exp- is not expediency in this, um, and the city takes a long time. Uh, to get here to rezone, it could open up the neighborhoods to additional uses. And that are uh, more than, than they're hoping to see within their neighborhoods. Please do note that even on a very quick timeframe, and this does not sound like it, but it would be. Um, if you were to recommend to delay the city council action, um, staff would anticipate that. That the city council action would be around March ninth. And probably continue it to that date, certain to try to get that subsequent application. Um, to be heard concurrently with it. Tonight, your potential actions, you're a recommending body, so you could uh, recommend to grant. The uh, uh, or approve the application as applied. Or as amended or as with conditions, excuse me, it's getting late. Uh, deny, recommend to deny the application or you could. Pause the application here and request additional or revised materials. And with that, I stand for any questions.
How about it? Do you want to, you guys have any questions at this point?
I do have a question and. I'm sorry, maybe this is something I should already know, but when you say like the staff recommends to proceed cautiously with development agreements and then we talked about. There being development agreements and then CCNRs, which it may have been a slide or two earlier. The, am I understanding correctly, the development agreement is like something with the city, but the CCNRs is with the HOA and so like. If we moved forward. With a recommending approval tonight, then I'm not saying that's what I'm recommending, but if we do that, then. It would still be up to the neighborhood whether they wanted to. Change their CCR, CCNRs, or I guess I don't really know how CCNRs work. How to think that through.
Vice Chair. And Commissioner Shepherd. Yes, you're, the CCNRs are enforced by the neighborhood, so they're a private contract. Whereas the development agreement would, it's an agreement that's tied to the rezoning. Of uh, the properties. So if you were to rezone with a development agreement, it would say, let's pick a zone. C two slash DA when you look at it in the assessors. And that's a trigger for whoever's looking at it, that there's an additional agreement. That dictates uh, the, the land use and door development. Process on a, on a piece of property. Didn't articulate that very well, but then that's a binding uh, contract that the city will enforce. Whereas the CCNRs are uh, private governance. For a community and in review of the Willowbrook CCNRs. There is already exist, there are provisions already. That limit the height to thirty five feet and limit uses to residential. And, and so. Development agreements, staff is saying perhaps. Um, proceed cautiously with that one because. It is likely. Uh, that the city would have to enter into a development agreement with every single property owner. And some property owners just might not want to do that and then you'll have unequal. And stuff going on anyway within that uh, community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Chair. I, Star, Star asked a question and I'll ask it a little different way. Uh, your staff recommendation slide, uh, item one is something we. Can address tonight. Um, items two and three, proceed cautiously and recommend delaying city council action. As possible. Actions uh, we can take. As part of our um as part of this hearing um so I mean. Just from a practical standpoint, city council can delay. They they own their agenda, they can choose to delay, to sync things up, okay, I. These are just more practical recommendations.
Um, yes, I certainly uh uh chair. Commissioner Wild, um, the city council, regardless of what you do tonight, could delay an application.
That's, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, that prompted one question on on part of the the chairman. Um, the chairman for tonight for this part of it. Uh, pursuing Matt's question, if we didn't. Do the third thing of making some kind of a recommendation to delay. You as a staff member, you would have perfectly a ability to make that recommendation to city council personally what he said. The city council sets their own agenda. So whether we do that, whatever, let's say we don't do that, we don't try to influence that. Then you still have the prerogative to make that same recommendation to the city council, right?
Um, yeah, I'm just gonna say Chairman Brown is. Um, yes, that that uh that is correct, uh the staff could certainly make that uh decision. Um, it's scheduled of for a hearing, but we see continuances all the time. Um, and they could, I believe they could do that outside of this, this is just bolstering uh that suggestion.
All right, thank you, uh, okay.
I didn't know we had that.
Yeah, so at this time, I'm gonna open up to public hearing. And I already described what how the process will go and uh. So I'll go through these where they've been signed up. And so the very first person and she will have fifteen minutes thereabouts. Uh, and this would be Wendy, Wendy Carver Herbert, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so that you have to repeat your name and your address again, so we have it unwrunged. Please.
Thank you, I'm Wendy Carver Herbert, I live at eighty five fifteen West Atwater Drive in Garden City, so thank you um. This has pushed me well beyond my um magic hour, so. I hope that I can still be co- um coherent and presenting our our position on some of these things. So I um provided a letter that is on mine and the. Um, council or the commission has had the opportunity, I um believe that you probably all had the opportunity to review fully. I submitted that letter on August seventeenth, twenty twenty five, um that's under the, you will find that within the zoning um. Application uh online. So it's not really my intent initially to really go through that letter. Specifically because I'm going into this assuming that you all have had the opportunity to review that um pretty fully between um August and now. But um I I did want to go ahead and talk just a little bit in providing um some context. And some additional context as some of these things have have come to light and concerns from the neighborhoods. So I think just so there is, okay, there we go, okay, so. This is zoning map as it exists today, so all of this light yellow here is all the what's we we will refer to. As Willowbrook, um as Ms. Thorbo mentioned, there are actually two separate subdivisions. That border Marigold that are not part of Willowbrook and there are individual homes along. Uh, Marigold that are not part of a subdivision, uh but they all are zoned R two. And then you have this whole section right in here, all of it is currently zoned R three, as is this section over here. So. As you go into, take a look at the comprehensive plan. As Ms. Thorbo discussed, all of the green is considered low density on the comprehensive um zoning map. All of this here in orange, all of it is um considered medium density, this right here, this. Right here is coffee, this is Marigold and this is ITD property. So all of this falls within the medium density designation of of the comprehensive plan. And has been that way um going back to two thousand six. Um, and taking a look at some of the zoning over the years, I would say. All of this when would presumably have been developed in an R two zoning has been that way since the day that it was developed. Um, and I can say that all of this that is currently zoned R three, at least going back to nineteen ninety five as I've been able to. Research based on available, easily available um zoning maps has all been R three. So one of the things I can say is that as we've moved through this process. Community members representing a lot of these areas that have been involved in this process. And there are members of um of these communities that are have been able to. Be brave enough to be here tonight and they may have some differing opinions, um and I think that they should be welcome. I I from my point of view, certainly welcome them as well. But some of the biggest concerns that we see, what 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 we were completely supportive of was this concept that. R three zoning has long been out of sync with what the vision of a me- of a low and medium density neighborhood is. And as my letter pointed out in the appendix that we got to that point because R three zoning. Prior to two thousand fifteen was only ten units an acre. And then in two thousand fifteen, there was a very broad reaching um ordinance change and one. Small component of that was the actual rezoning of R three zoning zone property. From ten units acre to thirty five and it removed the height restriction, which at that point in time was forty five feet. So that is, it was that decision at that point in time that really kind of put our neighborhood in this really difficult situation. That the purpose of the rezone is our understanding, at least through anecdotal information. That the reason that that change went from ten units acre to thirty five was to try to bolster development. In the east side of the city, but yet there was not really the consideration of what might the impacts have been on um. The low and medium density neighborhoods of the city. So it's put us in this situation um since two thousand nineteen have been advocating of rec- recognizing. That that particular decision that was made at that point in time has put our neighborhoods in some stress with. With regard to the types of del- developments that could be developed um in our uh in our. Or the types of delve elements that can be developed in our neighborhoods, so. We worked when this, when the cap, when um. The city brought forth some ordinance changes last year, the buffer zone and and um particularly where we thought there could be some opportunity here. To try to resolve some issues because what we have found most of all is real struggles with when you build. When you have a single family development and you have a um. A development that is has no height restriction, you begin to create some issues where the the development becomes very. Uh, off balance, but more concerning is it can create these intrusive use sheds that can then. Begin reaching in, looking down into these Ja- adjacent neighborhoods. We were successful in getting the Strawberry Glen development, um which is uh about approximately a ninety unit um apartment complex. In getting them to work with us in order to get that development to be. Um, more complimentary to the residential neighborhood that it sit sat within and. It had, they were able to make some changes that were not necessarily in code, but they were willing to do it and what we've been trying to push for is to get those. Things included in code, we've been successful in getting that done so far, that's when it was included in I the the. Combination of, I believe, the buffer zone ordinance exclusively. But we are still in a situation where this rezone has been um created and while we've been in agreement with. The development of the RM zoning district to try to move properties into the RM district. We are in disagreement with one with some of the staff um recommendations. So the challenge that we have um. Is particularly for Ms. as Ms. Thor- Ms. Thormbro said is in the R two. Section of city is that because of the new ordinance, the the. Buffers ordinance or um fif- uh ten fifty seven dash twenty five. As a result of changes that were made to bolster again and meet needs in the east side of the city by leaving our properties. R three, it puts our properties into a even more difficult situation if we don't get them moved into the RM. But the con- but the problem was is we never, what the goal was is we always wanted to change the R three zone properties. To the RM, to change all of those to the RM district. We never contemplated in all the work that we've been trying to do um with the city that the R two zoning. Would be changed in the medium density designation and um part of the. This, what we raised is that due to the fact that R two zoning is a lower density. Um, or lower intensity designation that does not exceed RM zoning in density, height. Uses and it's accordance with the comprehensive plan, medium density designation, we did not contemplate and nor. Do we agree that it should be rezoned to RM and and to actually. Support that, if you look at R two zoning, if you actually look at the comprehensive plan and you look at the medium density designation. It actually does allow for the deep, for the um detached housing, which is typically what you see. In low density um areas of the city as in defined above. We believe that still R two can be remaining within a medium density designation. Because it still can meet the the medium density definition. And so that we do not believe that that would create a spot zoning situation um. Our, it's our opinion that. It becomes a spot zoning situation if you take all of that R two zoning. And you maybe allow only certain properties within that R two to be something different, but if you treat all of them because they're all. Currently zoned R two, then if you leave them as they are, then it would not create a spot zone. I was actually just looking at the case law that uh Ms. Thormbro brought up and I I I don't even know that it's even uh. Close to being apples to apples comparison, it was not revolve involving a s- um. Uh, a citywide or a partially citywide zoning change, it involved a couple of applicant, an applicant that made an application for a zoning change. And the neighboring properties um disagreed with that, they appealed that decision and they won that decision. We're talking about a very different set of circumstances as and um it's our opinion that. You have the ability to make this decision as a decision making body. Um, as long as your findings are clearly stated that as I have pointed out. That it the to R two zone properties do actually. Can be described as fitting within the um residential medium density designation. Again, I only have access because I'm not an attorney, but we tend to live by on the givens personally. Um, land use handbook as um citizens and it was certainly referred to in the staff report. Um, so this came directly out of that and it does say that Idaho Supreme Court is emphatically repeating. Re- um repeatedly, a comprehensive plan is not a legally controlling zoning law, we know that with the code. Um, it serves as a guide, um it and the in accordance language does not require zoning decisions strictly. Conform to land use designations of the comprehensive plan, however, board of commissioners cannot ignore their comprehensive plan when adopting. Or amending the zoning, so what I see and what I read that to be is you can say, yes, we acknowledge that, we recognize that RM zoning. Is our or RM designation in the comprehensive plan is what that designation in, but you could say, but we would allow. This R two zoning to remain because we believe because it meets the designation as outlined in the comprehensive plan. So I believe that we can get through that hurdle and allow all of these properties to remain as they are and not put them through undue. Um, excessive additional cost and um burden to try to redo their CCNRs. To prevent the types of uses that were are are allowed within the RM. So additionally, what we worry about is. These issues is, so you have, you've. By, we are in this very strange situation now because of the approval of the ordinance ten fifty seven twenty five. Um, it states that in instance instances of different adjoining zoning districts. The allowed heights may not be compatible with adjacent properties, the lower il- illustrative methods to comply.
Need to be wrapping it up.
Okay.
Quick.
So the problem is is the and the worry that we have is if you. If you don't, if you, if you insist on moving the R two into the RM district. Then it no longer, it removes in the sense, it removes those differences that that. Now doesn't necessarily allow, it doesn't ever require the types of developments that could put these. Communities at a disadvantage and um additionally. When this comes to the R three zoning, this is, this talks about that now, I know I'm like, blah. A required mix of uses, any development that is in the R three mixed use, blah, blah, blah. Um, shall provide a mix of uses, so now what it's saying, when a development contains more than fifty dwelling units. And a density greater than twenty, there shall be at least thirty percent of the square footage of the site dedicated to nonresidential uses. It creates an issue because we know that there isn't, the currently, there's a very large piece of property that has an application on it. Because it has an application under existing um zoning. We're gonna presume that they're gonna stick with that plan, but now because we have this new law in place. That we now have these other additional uses that we never had contemplated. We really want that property to be re- rezoned properly, it needs to be rezoned and I know that the staff has made the recommendation. That we could deal with that in a later date when this application is no longer um either valid. Or then there could become a development agreement, but but again, our neighborhood's been put in this very difficult situation. That we don't want to be in and I know that I'm out of time, but I just want to really briefly um. Address this issue, so we have a very large segment of all of this R three zone property that is not is not being re- recommended. To move to the RM zoning, I I state very clearly in the letter, our concerns about this, I know why staff made the recommendation. Because it falls in activity um node, however, I want to part to to emphasize all of these properties are part of the same subdivision. As all of this that you are um recommend or that's been recommended to be changed. They all have integrated um street systems, none of these properties exit onto Shinden, they all. Exit internally into their neighborhood, these additional uses that now have been added into the R three. Can we imagine a tobacco shop right smack dab in the middle of this neighborhood and that's a little, that's essentially what is going to be allowed. If you do not change that R three zoning to the RM, the RM zoning.
We should be wrapping it up.
Okay, so the RM zoning does allow, last point to just emphasize, it does allow for properties within. The zoning district and so. If we had thought that 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 the city wasn't gonna recommend or the staff wasn't gonna recommend that those properties. Be rezoned to the RM, then then the information that that addresses this section right here. The question is, is why would that have ever been put in there in the first place? I believe that that does address the needs of an activity node. And therefore it makes the case that those properties should be rezoned to the RM. So with that, I um thank you for the additional time, I really am very appreciative of it. Um, if you'd ask us what is that we want, we want to retain R two, R two zoning as is. We want to rezone all R three properties, South and Marigold to RM. We want to ha- make sure that the Ruby subdivision and the Strawberry Glen apartments are. We want to make sure that the Ruby subdivision and the Strawberry Glen apartments are locate, which are located in low density designation, the comprehensive plan are rezoned to R two. With regard to the rest of the properties that are being proposed, we're neutral or supportive, but we would recommend that you not move forward with really any of this until you can address the one particular piece of property known as the Boise Bible College and get that zoning correct as well. Thank you.
Did the commissioners have a question?
No.
Thank you. Next person. I'm not sure if you want to speak or not. Is Michael O'Brien here? Fred Free. Okay. Mr. Free, please uh give your name and address.
Fred Free.
And then you have three minutes.
Thank you. Fifty-seven oh eight Willow Brook Way in Garden City. Appreciate this chance to uh address my concerns about the proposed rezoning. I wish I could just agree with everything Wendy said and I'm not uh informed enough to do so. I, I, I really have a hard time believing so much of that property east of, is it Glen? No, not Glenwood. What um? What's the other street off of Chindon that goes into the neighborhood?
Garrett.
No. Thank you. Garrett is owned R three because it sure looks like an R two neighborhood to me. As, as is Willowbrook and, and most of the area west of residential areas, west of Chindon, west of Glenwood, sorry, are uh low-density residentially developed. So to uh upzone those just seems like it's out of step with reality. More of an ideological concept, something that makes sense somehow to persons with a certain ideology of how the comprehensive plan should work. I did agree with Wendy's analysis that the comprehensive plan that doesn't necessarily have to strictly be, I forget how you said it, but re- require rezoning when something, when, when an R two zone could be considered a medium density zone. So uh I just think rezoning the uh things that are currently low-density residential to medium density is not a reflection of reality and uh creates issues for neighborhoods like Willowbrook and for other neighborhoods that are currently existing there that are not developed as a medium density neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Wait a second, wait a second, sir. Yeah, this might, either commissioner or not flashing.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Sandra Chess. Sandra, if I come up here and I give us your name and address, please, and then you'll have three minutes.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for enduring with all of us tonight. My name is Sandra Chess. My address is eight five five zero West Clubhouse Lane in Garden City. Um, I am a member of Willowbrook Estates. Um, I just want to acknowledge that I am in, in agreeance with everything that Wendy said this evening and in her letter. I had a chance to read it real quick. Um, and in the letter submitted on our behalf um for, for, from Terry Dean um for Willowbrook. Had a lot more to say, but Wendy covered most of it. So what I really want to address is that the rezone of Willowbrook and, and the adjoining subdivision from R two to RM opens up any vacant land, which we have some to our south and we have some to our west. If those are RM and we are R two, they have stricter setback requirements because of they're next to R two and they have, let's see, they have stricter setbacks. Equipment placement, screening that differs RM to RM, they wouldn't have that extra buffer. So the fact that Willowbrook has always been R two. When, when we moved in to Boise in nineteen eighty-seven, we lived in a duplex off of Streamside Way. Um, I think they were probably just starting Willowbrook. The whole area was R two. It's not the R two zoning um that needs to be changed. The R two should stay. Um, I, and I, again, I agree and reiterate that the R three should be also pulled down to RM. But there's also one area that is R three that's being downed to R two, which is basically the same nature, residential nature as Willowbrook. So it doesn't make Willowbrook a spot. It, it doesn't make that. Now it's R three being moved down to R two. They're adjacent. They're just across Marigold from each other. So the, the neighborhoods would be in sync and compatible with each other as R two. So, and then one last, one last statement that I want to make because I heard it tonight. Um, staff mentioned that um if the zoning could benefit Willowbrook residents because if somebody came in with an application that didn't comply with our CCNRs, but it did comply with city code, city would have to approve it. But then later I heard the exact opposite, that if there was a detriment because we were changed to RM, our CCNRs would override. So we need to make sure that, that, that particular conversation the, the conflict is removed so it's clear and concise. And then I would hope that this would either be denied, well, actually the whole, the, only the upzoning. Everything else in the proposal I am neutral on. It's just the um upzoning of the R two to RM that I'm opposed to. Um, so I would hope that it would either be delayed until the traffic. That, that you mentioned ACHD is coming in in twenty twenty-six to do a traffic survey. Would hope that we would at least wait until that has been accommodated before anything moves forward. Thank you.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Callie Carringer. Callie, about, I give us your name and address, please, and you'll have three minutes.
Callie Carringer, eight three two zero Willow Park Drive in Garden City. I kind of wish that staff had left up some of these. I'm going to go through some of the changes that there. So they're wanting R twenty to go to R three and is that residential?
If she'll uh
Okay.
Ask your questions and
Later.
She may address them if she has time.
Okay. There's no changes going on in, in a lot of the places where uh staff said were R two. There's also no changes going on in the R three, which again, I think should also be down to R two for the same reason that I think you mentioned a tobacco store. There's another R three going to RM. I think that should probably go to R two. And then there's our neighborhood that's in R two that is really being pushed up to RM. When I first saw that in the um Garden City website, I looked at RM and R three and there really wasn't significant differences between the two of them. So I'm not even sure why this new one, RM was created when R three seemed to be sufficient. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. And if, if she has an opportunity, uh Jenna may address some of your questions if that fits in, in the rebuttal.
Thank you.
Any questions, Commissioner Wild?
No, thank you.
Thank you. June Carney. Sarah Popleton. Sarah, excuse me, Sarah Popleton. Jason McGlynn. And Rose Ford. Your name now? What's your name?
Lisa Tony, T O N E Y.
It's not in this stack, but um. Oh, if you want to speak, why don't you come up and give your name, please? And uh Jenna, do you have a blank?
I, I.
Yeah. Yeah, you, you could write it down, please.
Lisa Tony, five nine two one North Cloud Nine, Willowbrook. I drew the short straw representing Willowbrook tonight by uh our HOA president. She's going to owe us, or owe me. I have three points. Uh, one is I don't understand the spot zoning, but if our neighborhood has always been R two, how can we be guilty of spot zoning? It seems like that would be a thing that you use to carve out something you want to do right now. So I don't understand that part. I also, your recommendation, you're looking at a lot of zones and that's a lot of things. Maybe you're, the commissioners, you like six out of the seven things. I can only address the one Willowbrook. Maybe the other one should be upped or lowered. I don't know, but I'm talking about this one. I don't think it should. I don't think we should be upzoned. Is that what Willowbrook is being done? Upzoned? I don't like that. And I didn't like the comments that you're changing our zoning because you don't want to be sued. I don't like that. I think you ought to do the right thing, not worry about being sued. And your comments earlier at a different meeting, and you said it uh today, one of you, uh, that we can just change our CCNRs or it's in our CCNRs. They're confusing and as it is, and the people don't understand them. We try to make them very comprehensible, but you're going to throw this in the mess too. We won't know. Are we complying with you, the state, the city? I don't know. So uh, that's that. And for my little bit of stuff, this is the first time I've come to one of you, your uh meetings and I really appreciate what you guys are doing. Thank you. But I've gone to a couple of city council meetings. Concentrate on parking. Everything that they do, please, and I heard that from a lot of you. Please concentrate on the parking um because it affects all of us. And they'll say, yeah, pie in the sky, we're all riding on buses or we're working at home, but we're not. There's two cars for every adult, there's a car for every adult in the house. And this thing where they're giving you only one spot in tandem, spark parking is for the birds. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Stand here.
Have we got any questions? All right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, is there anybody else out here that wanted to talk to us? I, well, then uh, we'll ask Jenna to get up there and provide the staff rebuttal and uh see if she can answer some of your questions. Okay?
Thank you, Chairman Brown. Um, I have a few just uh to try to respond to some things that were brought up. Um, the, the R districts like the RM, the R three um are generally speaking residential. The R three is now classified as a mixed juice that will allow for um uses that uh are compatible with residential uh uses per zoning code. I don't, don't kill me on, on that, but that, that's the zoning intent behind it. Whereas RM i- is intended to be uh really akin to the form standards, the same form standards as the R two, the low density um with one exception, and that's allowing ten extra feet in height. And so those form standards that are out there on the ground now, if they're legally compliant with R two, and that's the same that would be under the RM, you don't have different setbacks. I did hear um that there are stricter setbacks um it, between the zoning districts. I'm not quite sure what that's referring to in the generation of the RM code. It was really trying to imagine because the idea was is that area, the existing area would be rezoned to the, the um RM, that there wouldn't be non-conforming uh a creation of non-conforming, non-conformities. And so um if you look through that, um, excuse me, I need to address you. If you look through that ordinance, um, that ordinance really will often say R two and RM zoning districts. This is what applies, like the additional setbacks, et cetera. Um, and so on that, um, I, I don't know that there is a stricter setback uh related to R two or at least I'm not, I'm missing uh what that's referring to. And then CCNRs, uh, the city's zones are legal. Um, they're, they're regulations that apply um to the properties which they're zoned. And so there's a whole set of regulations and the city's required um to adhere to those zoning. So if somebody comes in and asks for a use that isn't allowed, um, they're not allowed to have it or whatever litany is within those zoning districts. But the CCNRs is a private contract. The CCNRs cannot be less strict and prevail because the city code is going to prevail um in, in that regard. But if they are more strict than the city code is, then the community can enact that more strict uh contract on to the properties. And so that, that is a little bit, um, hopefully that helps explain the difference between the two. And with that, I stand for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you. Uh, so uh, Commissioner Wild, uh, have you got any question right now?
No question.
You have any questions? I think I have a question, a couple of questions here, maybe. And I'll try and be in, I'll try and hurry up. The issue, for the most part, with one exception probably, is Willowbrook and what they're going to do. All of those are individual family houses that are on, on their own lot. Is that correct?
Uh, Chairman, that is correct.
And it's, it's totally built out.
Uh, Chairman, with the exception, so yes, staff would say at this point in time uh that it's built out. There are larger lots, but those are the homeowners association lots. So they may have, from what I've looked at on plat maps, et cetera, um, uh, and the original approvals, um, like the clubhouse or parking area, et cetera.
Other than that, okay, that makes sense. Other than that, okay, that makes sense. I think that's the only question I have.
Thank you.
So. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at this point. And I'm going to open up for discussion among the commission. And we want to talk about anything that came up to your mind as prompted on this tonight and to include deciding how we want to proceed. And so I I think I'll start with Commissioner Wild.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, oh, I want to first thank everybody for staying as long as you did. This is this is uh this is your community in action. I appreciate that you're all as committed to it as I want to be. So thank you. Um, there's a lot of information that's in our packet. I've reviewed all of it. I've read Wendy's letter a couple of times. It's a great letter. Uh, has lots of good detail and great arguments. Um, I uh think I mentioned earlier in the evening, I've been in the community for twenty eight years and and know it well and know your community well, uh your neighborhood. Um, but I've been on this board a long time too, this commission. And uh a long time ago, I was part of building that comp plan that you all saw on your screen several times. Rezoning and annexations, uh they're difficult. They're they're um broad stroke decisions that cities have to make um to comport with their comp plan. And and that's what this is. We're not bound to the comp plan, but uh we have to occasionally uh make rezoning decisions that um we'll dovetail with the comp plan. And that's what you have tonight. So um I think it's it's uh it's difficult to imagine what might happen. And and I've heard that, you know, the the phrases I've heard tonight about uh put our community at risk with the rezone and things like that. It's it's hard to imagine what uh might happen, but that doesn't mean it's gonna happen. This is, this is part of envisioning Garden City as uh and its growth in a thoughtful way. And we put a lot, our staff has put a lot of time and effort into this. And so I'm gonna support the rezone.
All right, Commissioner Shepherd.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to thank you all for being here so late. Bye. I will, I moved my microphone away on the one I recuse myself from. I'm sorry. Okay, so yes, um, I also want to thank you all for being here so late. I I'm starting to fade myself, so thank you. And staff, you guys did an amazing job putting this um staff report together. I really appreciate it. Wendy, your letter was very good and detailed too. I read it. Um, I uh just, I've been sitting here all all evening looking at the zoning map and the comprehensive plan map, the future land use map and um knowing that Willowbrook is built out, I don't necessarily agree with keeping it zoned. I mean, I think that it should be zoned RM and not stay at R two. And I think sorry, my, so late, I'm 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 in favor. I'm just gonna say I'm in favor of moving of recommending approval of the rezone. And it has a lot to do with what Commissioner Wild already said with like the city's growth and just keeping in line with the comprehensive plan that we put in place many years ago. And I think if the comprehensive plan was to change, then that would be a different conversation. But because this was brought forward with the intention of creating the RM district in that area. And I trust all of the things that the staff has put in here with the ex- explanations that I am in favor of recommending approval.
Okay, um, I should have uh stated this before, uh but I think it's sort of been implied. Uh, we are uh on a decision we're doing tonight. We're a recommending body. We're making making re- the recommendation to the city council who will have the final decision authority on this. Uh, and in that light, Jenna, could you put up the the one slide? It's a bit difficult. That shows us the three things that you were recommending that we do. I want to make sure that we address each one of them. And then I have a couple of comments. So that we all understand what we actually are doing. No, I think that was it. Yeah, that's it. Right? Okay. All right, now, first of all, I I agree with everything that was said by the other two commissioners. I wa- I I want, I really want to thank you for participating and sticking around. Um, it's too bad that you had to wait so long, but the way it was set up, because we had some of our members that were gonna recruit themselves, it only made sense to do this last. Um, so let's talk about what we're gonna do. I'm in favor as they have stated for the same reasons. This has been worked on and uh like Commissioner Wild, I participated in putting together the original comp plan and I have participated on this board with every change that's been put to it. And so I follow the need for why we need to resolve some of these issues. Uh, it's not that we were looking around for some way we could mess up with people's lives that live west of of Glenwood, but the city council pointed out that there were areas here that needed to be looked at and needed to be fixed. And so we're part of that process. Um, with regard to the people in Willowbrook. This, I do not believe this will result in any, in certainly not in the near term. Maybe ultimately in the very long term, when the whole area is redeveloped, it might have an impact, but it in the near term, I don't believe that it is gonna impact on the way what is happening in your immediate area within your subdivision. And I do think that to the extent that you want to assure yourselves of that, the proper way to do it, it was pointed out with Jenna, was with the HOA CCNRs. And I have had a little bit of experience with that. And starting out in nineteen eighty three, from then to now, I've participated in five HOAs, of which two of them, I served for a very long time on the board of directors of them. And the other one and a third one, I was a part of the leadership that totally redid their all their CCNRs and the documents that established it. And so I have a little experience on on the use of HOAs. They do have the disadvantage and as is pointed out, but from the perspective of the city, they have the advantage of the city is not the enforcing agency. But if you have a homeowner association want to make sure that it retains the the things that are put in there, then you have to get yourself together and make sure number one, the CCNRs say and address the things that are important. And the single biggest issue uh that you have addressed here tonight has to do with the heights that might be put in 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 your area. My understanding is that's already in your CCNRs. So that doesn't require, it doesn't require a change or anything, but what it does, it does require that if there becomes an opportunity where that has to be enforced, then you have to be willing to enforce it. And I don't believe that we should in the general to resolve, I think it creates too many other issues if, for example, we did what you're requesting that the city do, uh leave your development out and fix, make all the others fix all of those and leave that not fixed. So that's the primary reason why I'm in support of doing that. So among these things that's up there, I think that we should remove those items that you want left out for the various reasons. And the one that's most important, probably in my mind, is the Bible college. Uh, I think that that's a appropriate thing to do for now, since it's already in process. It's already being processed. We already know about it. And the way to make sure that that is considered is to do uh what the the third one is, but I don't believe that that requires us to make, do anything on the P and Z. I think that the staff has every all the power that you need to to make those recommendations of the city council, right? And you can obviously report to them that we we think that's a good idea, the delay, but we didn't think that it was necessary for us to tell them what they ought to do. And and I really, I feel strongly about that. So that being said, uh that's enough speech making for tonight. Uh, how about one of you give me a motion, please?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that Planning and Zoning Commission, following the public hearing, uh recommend approval of the rezone application uh subject to the following condition, remove sixty eight hundred North Horseshoe Bend Road from the rezone proposal. That concludes my motion.
Have a second? All right, uh uh I, is that any necessary for any more discussion? I sort of don't think so. So I'll call for the vote. Everybody in favor, say aye.
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 There are votes aye, so it's unanimous. And with that, uh, we don't have any other further actions. And as far as I know, we don't have to have any discussion. There's and the staff need any more things to discuss. So they don't think so. So I'm I'm gonna declare us adjourned. And I look up there at military time, it's fourteen minutes after.